Okay, good morning and welcome to the joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee for Saturday, March 6th. All meetings are being recorded and pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15th order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Select Board and Finance Committee will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the AG's webpage. The town will persevere to use conference call capabilities regularly for other parties to listen in and participate accordingly. If not possible, we will post on the town's website an audio recording as soon as possible after the meeting. This is Doug Moglen for the Board of Selectmen. I also see Russell Fox from the Board of Selectmen and we are both remote. And also Carl Steinhardt, the CAO, he is also remote but at Town Hall. And Mr. Pennell, you want to call the role for the Finance Committee, please?
Linda, did you want to take care of that?
No, go ahead, Art.
Okay, so people present on the Finance Committee, Linda Battle. You say aye?
Aye.
Art Pennell, aye. Robert Horchek?
You're muted.
He's muted.
You're right. Bob, are you present?
I am.
Okay. Sheila Chamberlain?
I'm here.
Terry Mish?
Yo.
Karen DeMeo?
Yeah.
And Carrie Doherty?
Here.
Okay, we're all here. And accounted for. Also under the guidelines that Mr. Bogdan so professionally just stated.
I believe the entire Finance Committee is remote. Oh, what do you know? Here's Mr. Joe. Okay, so we are supposed to start right promptly at eight o'clock, which according to my clock at the south end of town, it is exactly eight o'clock. So is there any preliminaries, Mr. Steinhardt?
No, I think you just want to make that you're going to go through this hearing process today. And you know, you are posted if you wanted to take votes, but for the most part, you generally just go through your your hearing process and then the Select Board generally roll calls out and ends it. In the Finance Committee, members sometimes stay and conduct their own business. Deal with that as you get to that point in the meeting.
Very well. So the first victim is the town clerk, correct?
And everybody's got their binder books, stuff submitted. And I believe Michelle had just submitted some other FYI information yesterday noon that's outside of the budget, just for people to see on the tax.
Correct. Mrs. Hill, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. How are you?
Morning, Michelle.
Excellent.
Great. Did you want to go over what I sent you guys first leading into the budget or?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. Um, so every year I usually present to you guys a tax title listing. This year I gave you a little more because the tax title process didn't flow on the calendar like normal. Mainly due to two things, one being COVID related and the other being six elections. So the time was very scarce there to do this process. So there's one listing, there's about 15 on that list. That's the current listing. The oldest is 2013. That's a pretty, pretty good list, actually. And I mean that in a sense of quantity, not anything other. So that, that's good. The two reasons why it's small is because we've been working, you know, to get things resolved. So people have been coming in pain. And, and the other is because of the third item that I had to send you, which is the advertising, which is the process. The other one I sent you is our foreclosure list. So we currently have seven on that list. But back to the 15, there's actually three on that list that we took ownership right before COVID and I never moved them to the foreclosure list. So there will be an auction coming up because I've already gone out to a property a couple of times during the last year. But now the things are starting to wind down. I'm going to be moving forward. It's one of the properties, it's vacant. So so that's going to be going on. And the third listing I gave you was the process. And we're in the, in the, in the process is advertising. I've already sent out letters to all the delinquencies from 2020. And now they, these are the individuals that still have not paid at this time. So they get advertised. So it's actually going to be in the newspaper come this Monday and they have two weeks from that time. And there's 24 of those. I started with over 50 when I started this process. So this is, this is not too bad. So with that said, it could be a smaller list come the 22nd and whatever that number is, it gets put to that main list of those 15. So that will then conclude that process. Do you guys have any questions on any of that?
Nine.
Do you want to start with my tax title account?
Yes, please.
So at this time, I'm asking if we can just maintain, actually, yes. Yes, maintain that line. And the reason for that is two, two reasons. One, the auction, that's going to be some cost and the increase of filing with the registry went from $75 to 105. So that does impact the budget because back to these 24 that got advertised to file the lien is $105 per each one. So if we can just maintain that and I'll continue to watch, watch the list as the years go on because if it starts to shrink, then I can start the request to reduce. But right now I'd like to maintain. Any questions with that before I move on to elections?
Michelle, we had a significant event this year in terms of one of your clients on the list here. In other words, did we receive a large payment at some point regarding delinquent taxes on a particular account?
Would that, would that individual be a makeup of at least 134 parcels?
134 what?
Parcels. Okay, I shouldn't say the name. I didn't, okay. Yes, the American and paid in November.
So that was a significant event in terms of your efforts, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you for saying that. Yes. So they, in November, when they closed, everything came to, you know, an end with that. They paid that and their substantial amount of water that was outstanding as well. So they are 100% current. So.
Good. Excellent. It's also, by the way, it's, it's not owned by that owner anymore. It's owned by a new ownership group called Triple Investments out of California. And it's been renamed the cottages.
Wow, really?
Yeah. I might make note, Art, that they have this all paid. Now they're eligible to file for a tax abatement on the current tax bill. And the Board of Assessors will be dealing with that issue.
Russ, are you on the waiting list up there?
Filing for my senior abatement that'll be coming in a few days. Yes.
Oh, I meant for housing. Okay. I didn't mean the national. You're talking about elder, elder Fox, right, Doug? Yeah.
That was Carl. Let's be clear. Let's be clear.
Be filing some sort of thing against Vice Chairman Didi for the derogatory statement.
That's right.
I will say the current owner has reached out to, I guess, build a relationship with my office already. So, so I think things are going to go well going down the road. So if you're ready, I'll move on to elections.
Sure.
I can start with, we don't have six next year. We have one. So I can tell you I am a happy camper. So that's probably the, the gist of the reductions in any and all the lines. However, there was one line, which is the 52907, although I reduced, I couldn't reduce too, too much because I do have seven machines now because I need them. So I went from four machines to seven machines and I have to service them, you know, keep them up to speed. And those additional machines that I got, I got them at like $150 each. So it was a, it was a bargain. I had to. So because of the early voting area that we need to process all those ballots, not only the election area as well. So they were definitely machines that are being used. So that's pretty much all I can really say about this entire area is it's all election driven. So does anyone have any questions with regards to any particular? Otherwise, I think they pretty well, it either maintained or went down.
Michelle, I have a question regarding our upcoming local elections. Are you aware of any rules or regulations or restrictions that are going to be placed on those relative to what took place last year?
Thank you for bringing that up. Right now, I think the current is it called executive orders, I think possibly, mom goes out into March 31st with regards to elections. And there's a fight right now that they're going to extend them until June, end of June. So with that said, I have to get more of the details. Does that include early voting, which early voting never really happened for locals unless there was another election involved. So hopefully it's not an addition. However, what will stick is the early voting, no excuse mail-in scenario. So that would be basically the challenge on the local election coming for this particular budget year that we're already in. So, but there is a good chance because there's a lot of communications that I've been seeing in my, in the association of town clerks that there is a good chance that this mail-in ballot, no excuse, might be here to stay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
But as of right now, the governor's order expires March 31st. So
that, that is.
There'd have to be legislation in order to have a early voting for the local election.
They're correct. But some of this other stuff is, one is the extension of the executive. The other is there's actually stuff introduced already. And I think a lot of the driving is Secretary Galvin himself. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional questions for Michelle on the budget or any other areas for Michelle that you want to cover?
I just had one more area, which is my town clerk treasure collector one. And pretty much with that as well, actually it did go up by $50 and that is just because of one of my dues had increased. Other than that, I don't have anything other to say on it unless someone has a question.
You're getting, you might want to indicate that you're getting ready for quarterly billing?
I am. We're getting ready for quarterly billing. However, I'm leaving the the expenses the way they are, meaning that although we're billing out four times, I'm only mailing twice. So when you get your first one, it'll be the two estimates. So people will need to know which, when I put it, I'll put a flyer in the first one saying, just we cut that there will be two on this particular bill. So they have to hold on to one of them and then pay when that is due. Our first one and then the second one will be the actuals after the budget's been passed and tax rate set and everything. So the posters will remain the same. The amount of, you know, obviously the, the printing and everything will, will remain the same as well. I've already run all this through the vendor. They do this for a lot of other communities. So we'll stay status quo on that right now. And our first bill that will be due for quarterly will be mailed out on July, the first of July and be due in August, August 1st.
Important because we, we have a big hit when we get the school assessment number.
That is the time we get hit. Correct. That and the insurance as well.
Yep.
Does anybody have any questions?
I just, just a comment, Michelle. You intend to try to make sure this word gets out and we try to help educate the people on this new billing system as much as possible.
Thank you for saying that. Not only did I put a flyer in the first billing of this fiscal year, I'm putting another one in that's going to be going out in about two to three weeks. And we, every time anybody calls our office, whether it's a mortgage company, a resident and they're inquiring on their current year, we explain to them. So it's been a lot of verbal. They're coming in person. We're explaining to them. So nobody walks away from a conversation on their taxes in the current year without knowing the previous year. Anyone who's going into a payment agreement for this year, it's in writing and explained to them before anything is signed. So it has been ongoing for months to educate everyone. And we've had some pretty good feedback with regards to the decision to do this too. So.
Yeah, Mr. Vice Jim, and you should recognize out of the 52 weeks that this pandemic has been going on. I believe the north side lobby has only been closed maybe five total weeks out of 52 weeks while this pandemic has been going on. So we've been able to, you know, interact with people in the lobby or outside the building and answer a lot of questions and deliver a lot of services.
Have we gotten anything, have we gotten anything into like the newspaper or something like that?
I don't think I did that, but I can do that when I do, when I do this time. It's not a requirement, but I can surely do that. I don't necessarily have funds in my budget for it, but maybe I do. I'll look at that because it'll be in this current budget. But I could do it.
I don't think Mr., what Mr. Mish is suggesting, instead of paying for a news article, we can use the Westfield News and Southwoods and other publications.
Send in favor, reminder, right?
Kind of a press statement from your office.
Okay, sure. Absolutely.
Good.
I, so let me ask you a question. Would you suggest that I do it as I'm sending out the second half or after the collections of the second half? As, as, because you guys are going through it on the other end. So when would you like to see that? When will it stick out to you more?
I think when the bills go out, that's my opinion, like as you mail them because people are going to get them and go huh.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I would, I would say before that at least, you know, a week or so before that anyway, but not, not at the same time.
So the second half bill in, in April, May, which is the old system or after that's mailed out, but before the new quarterly one happens in July?
That's what I was thinking, Carl, only because people have to get through and finish the, you know, what a cycle is and then get on a new cycle. But again, I still wanted your feedback. So.
You can get, you can get them to do it twice too. It's not like it's a one and done. Just have to add something a little different, like, you know, you know, this is going great and people are really catching on or whatever, some little blurb or kind of thing in there. It's changed up.
Do we maybe do one of the all calls?
Sorry.
More is better.
Yeah, I always wondered if we could do an all call through, you know, anyone on the emergency call list in the town could get a reminder before the second one.
Or all of the above.
In between cookie drive, see if you can get a message out on our emergency broadcast channel.
I can do a, a general one for the explanation of the entire year and then I'll do one for each quarter when it's due, but I'll only do it. I should only do it for this one fiscal year coming up. So not annoying everyone going forward. So I will, I will do that. So everyone will get into that pattern of new due dates. So.
Yeah, and the other thing. You're collecting tax, you're collecting taxes. So, you know, you're annoying anyway. So don't worry about it.
I, yeah, thank you.
Exactly.
No.
Okay, I'm good.
All right. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Michelle. Thank you.
Guys, have a good weekend.
Yeah, I'll tune out.
Thanks for the donut, Terry.
Yeah, you bet. Anytime.
Carl, is there anyone going to come from historical?
I, I'm not seeing anybody here. You know, obviously it is carried on your agenda to address the need to replace some, some vacancies there. So I think at this point, not seeing anything, we should be going on to Mr. McMahon and the economic development.
So it is written.
Mr. McMahon?
Okay, can you hear me?
Absolutely.
Okay. Basically, it's a flat budget. We provided the minus five and the upper budget is still the same as the current budget. This fiscal year has been kind of tough with a lot of places closed and limited hours and all, although we have had signs from late June until early December, asking people to shop local, shop small. And we'll do more of that once most of the snow is gone, probably next month. And we didn't have our home and business show last April because of course, because of the virus and we're not planning on doing anything in the foreseeable future because we don't know when you can have groupings, large groupings of people in Town Hall or other places. So we'll just kind of have to play it by ear and we did have a little bit last November, the Saturday after Thanksgiving on Small Business Saturday. So some of the businesses in town had some signs and they had some bags they could give away and a few things. And we'll probably do that the coming fiscal year. The bags and some of the signs about Small Business Saturday, that stuff's provided free across the country by a large credit card company. So it didn't cost us anything. And that's now open to any questions you may have.
Mike, have you ever done a, or considered doing a brochure to kind of promote the town?
We, 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 we have done that in the past. And we gave it to that company that was, and to all the department heads, et cetera. They were thinking of moving to South Wake a couple of years ago, which promoted our recreational activities. The fact that we're near large post offices for mailings, the fact that we're near 28 or 29 colleges and universities. Within 40 minutes, there's, I think it's six or seven hospitals in both Connecticut, Massachusetts. We have done that and we will probably do that again.
And then we have a, also promoting the fact that we have a nice industrial park that has a lot of space in it right now too.
Uh huh. Yes.
Thank you. We have the library next that I saw.
Lynn and Mike, Mike McMahon is chairperson. Lynn Blair will be here for that appointment.
Exactly. Who's going to present for the, the library?
Lynn. Hello. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so yes, we, we presented a couple of budgets for you all. The requested by department is kind of the perfect day. What we would be able to use level funded and we did not present a 5% decrease budget after talking with the Board of Trustees. There are certain requirements that we have to meet by the state. We have to meet what's called a municipal appropriation requirement, which is basically a formula that takes into account the last three fiscal years and an average of that and raised with a certain percent. So we have to meet that certain requirement and we, we copied that at the top of our sample budget that we sent in. And we also have to meet the requirement of our informational materials based on our town size. We have to spend 19% of our total budget on that line item. And if, if we were to not meet these two requirements, it would just mean that we do receive state aid from the state, usually two checks per year that we use for additional library services. It can be used for whatever we need. So basically if we weren't to meet these two requirements, it would just put us at risk of not receiving those additional funds. Which ultimately our Board of Trustees decided that we wouldn't, we would present, we, we wouldn't be able to present a 5% decrease budget.
Right. There's in, in what's happened over the last couple of years, I just want to make you cognizant of this, Lynn. Having, having been the, the new person is that the, now that the building's getting older and we have some other issues that are coming up. Have some issues where the, some of the library maintenance and contracts and agreements used to be handled through some other cost centers in the facilities and grounds people have just mentioned that we need to address that issue in this budget process. So some of that capacity that you're referring to exclusive of the informational materials part, some of those dollars of what has to be a commitment may end up going toward some of the maintenance issues in the contracts and agreements for the services that deal with, you know, running the building in the ground. So I just wanted you to be cognizant of that.
Yep.
Lynn, don't you have the ability to go for a waiver to the state on that in times of economic downturn, which certainly this would be one. You know, there's businesses that are going out. We're not sure about our tax revenues overall for the year. Nothing's been certified as far as that's concerned. Our supposition is that they're probably going to be done this year from some, some attrition relative to the economic downturn. Was there any consideration given by the Board of Trustees to putting in for a a waiver on the basis of that economic downturn?
Yes, yeah, we, we, oh, go ahead, Mike.
Not really, because if you go for a waiver, the town has to do a lot of justification of the library budget versus the DPW versus police, fire, et cetera. We've done that in the past and the town accountant at the time, not the current town accountant, but a previous one said, I never want to go through that again because she had to put together so much material and so much justification on what the town was doing with other departments. And the reality is, according to the newspaper, the state is bringing in $347 million more last month in revenue than they had projected. And their projection was a small increase in the previous year. So the state currently is flush with funds. And hopefully in the next week or two, in Washington, some legislation will be passed, which will actually give additional cash to the state.
In addition to that, like I said before, it may be one of those issues where some of these new dollars that are required going to go into line items that the library operations staff that runs the, their services don't necessarily end up getting those dollars in the line items they use within that grouping of line items. It may be going to the maintenance and the maintenance contracts.
Oh yeah, the same as electric could go up in, in cost or natural gas, building, et cetera.
Yeah, but you know, it's one of those things where you have certain pieces of equipment that are wearing out and, and I think the Finance Committee has seen in the past couple of years, a growing number of FinCom emergency requests. and I think the Finance Committee has seen in the past couple of years, a, a growing number of FinCom, uh, emergency requests. So this is also to be able to address those types of issues.
How much does the library receive? So you guys get two checks a year from the state? Uh, what, what kind of dollars are we talking about?
Typically, each check is about around nine thousand dollars. Some years, five or six years ago, because of state difficulties, it was down to four or five thousand dollars. But currently in the last year or two, it's been a nine thousand dollars plus twice a year.
Eighteen in total or, or nine?
Yes, eighteen total.
I got a question about the, um, you were closed quite a bit because of COVID, is that correct?
No, well, we were close to four or five weeks, wasn't it?
We were, we were closed, um, it was mid-March through about, um, we, we started to have ba- uh, staff come back in late May, early June. But myself and the staff that were able, we were continuing to try to work from home and, um, do what we could from a distance. But we, we did come back in June, at the beginning of June, and we were able to oh, we, we had everybody back in the building and then we opened to the public, I believe it was July thirteenth. And we've been, uh, open ever since.
Okay. My question is, um, so you're, uh, you haven't spent as much, uh, because of, because of that. From what I'm seeing in the numbers here, and is the state giving us any, uh, reprieve on, you know, the mandatory dollar amount that we have to spend because, you know, and it's not just us, but I mean, I imagine other, you know, libraries have been closed, uh, throughout the state. Have they given, you know, a, a reprieve on that?
They've given us several reprieves. Uh, we, we are also required to be open a certain number of hours per week based on our town size. So they gave us a reprieve on that. Um, they gave us a reprieve on the mandatory purchasing up until the end of this fiscal year. They're, they're doing it chunk by chunk. Um, so they're doing that up until the end of this fiscal year. I don't know what next fiscal year we'll bring yet. But, um, as of right now, yes, they, they have given us a bit of reprieve, but they, they still encourage us to continue spending. Um, but they, they have waived a bit of the requirements for that. So just because everybody's in a difficult situation.
No, that's good. I just, you know, I, I, I mean, I see that you're spending approximately twenty-nine thousand dollars a month as of you have this year up to, uh, two eight, uh, February eighth. And then your prod, your projection for next year, uh, is, uh, almost thirty-eight thousand dollars a month. So, I was just curious. So state has given us a reprieve. Beautiful, excellent.
Given us a reprieve up until the end of this fiscal year, so up until the end of June, and then we'll, we'll see what next year brings.
Good.
I also want to thank the, uh, Library Director for, um, at certain times where we had issues with the council aging, uh, giving out meals, providing services to residents in other locations or other capacities that the, uh, the Library Director and some of her staff members came over and existed the town during the pandemic and helping to provide services from other departments.
To your point, Mike, about that, uh, uh, revenue exceeding projection, how does that revenue, uh, look compared to, uh, actual revenues, uh, versus last year? So is it down over, uh, over last year? Mike?
I don't understand the question.
Well, you, you made the statement that, that the revenue that the state has, has taken in is better than their projections, but.
From what I read in, from what I read in the newspaper, the Massachusetts Department of Revenue is brought in more money in the month of February, three hundred and forty-seven million more than they projected.
How does that relate to the actual revenue? If that, if the article didn't cover it, then that's a.
All I know is the limited bit you see in the newspaper.
Okay, alright.
I've got a question about the municipal appropriation requirement where it's based on a three-year average plus two-point-five percent increase. So how does this year with a decrease come into play? Are they taking into that, is that taken into consideration, the three-year average for this year, or are they going to take this year out because it's an anomaly?
Um, as of right now, they're not changing the municipal appropriation requirement. Uh, they're not changing the formula or anything like that. Um, if I'm understanding your question, um, usually we, we are able to handle a bit of a decrease in our budget as, as shown by the, the five percent decrease line. Um, so, so we, we're lucky enough that we, we are just a little bit above of the municipal appropriation requirement. But, um, you know, as, as years go by and if we do keep facing decreases, we'll keep inching closer and closer to that, that cutoff line. Did I, did I answer your question? I'm sorry if I didn't understand it.
Probably not really, because, um, you're saying that you did not calculate the five percent decrease. You're basically keeping it a level funded. Now, we've got a year here that you said your expenses decreased, so the three-year average would actually decrease. Do we take that into consideration this year, or is that gonna flow forward to the next three years that we're gonna see a little bit less?
What the mark does is it looks at the amount of money not spent, but the amount of money that the municipality allocates to the department, in this case to the library. So you're looking at the current fiscal year and the two previous fiscal years, adding the three together, dividing by three, and then there's got to be a two-and-a-half percent increase over the three-year period. So it's not like, because someone had asked us a few years ago, it's not that you have to have a two-and-a-half percent increase in your budget every year, it's over a three-year period, you have to have a two-and-a-half percent increase.
Okay, so the three years is not the expenses, the three years is what your budget is.
That we get from town.
So there's no way we're ever gonna really see a, a decrease or keeping it level.
All, the thing is, when the, the library spends less money, then in reality on June thirtieth, yet that goes to free cash that the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen in the following year can then spend on whatever other necessities have come in in the town, which the towns have been doing for decades.
Okay, so you're, you're saying that we can actually spend less and save money on the library, but when we're going through the budget process, we always have to show that we're budgeting.
Well, you, 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 you have to show that you're budgeting and the reality is if you kept doing some kind of stunt, and I'm not suggesting you are, because you're not, but if you were doing some stunt saying, oh, we'll give you the money, we'll give you fifty thousand for X, but you can only spend ten thousand, well, after a while, that would become fishy, but I'm not suggesting you're doing that.
Okay.
We have to appropriate that money too at, at budget time. At town meeting, if you budget it, you've got to appropriate it, so.
Right.
It's, it's, right, there's a balance always between trying to balance free cash, right?
Yeah, my, my question was answered.
Thank you.
So can I ask Mike a question? Back to the three-year average, is that three-year average based on what we appropriate or but, or, or is it based on what is actually expended?
Appropriated.
Can I ask Mike a question? Mike, I have a staffing question. For as long as I can remember, the trustees have been looking to add personnel and increase salaries at the library uh, for good reason. And I noticed this year you have no staffing projections or requests. Does that mean that, in your opinion, you finally arrived at a stable, adequate place in terms of personnel?
Twelve, twelve months ago, the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, and it went into the current fiscal year budget, upping one of the positions from a part-time position to a full-time position. The reality with the virus and everything else, that full-time position has remained unfilled for the last twelve months. So if you look at the part-time budget figures in front of you, you'll see that we're not spending as much money as we have appropriated, because that one position is empty. Lynn?
Yes, yeah, we, we, um, last year, well, not last year, it was way before that. We were given the approval to hire, um, move our children's position from, I believe it was twenty-two and a half hours to a full-time position. Um, and because of the hiring freeze, we haven't been able to fill that position. Um, we had a retirement at the end of February of last year, and as of right now, that position still remains open. Um, so, so since that salary was added into last year's budget, budget request, um, it's still contained in this current budget request, but it's no longer considered new. That's why.
But it, but it is adequate, uh, you're staffed adequately now? That's my question.
At the moment, yes. Um, I, I'm, I'm too, I'm too new to be able to tell, to, to be honest. Um, I started in Ju- July twenty-nineteen, um, and since then, we, we haven't had a full staff with retirements and leaving. So I, I haven't been able to see us fully operate as, as fully staffed. So I'm, I'm hopeful that once we're able to fill this position, then we can get a better idea of our operations and how things are working. So I'm, I'm not fully able to answer that question yet because I haven't seen us at full capacity, unfortunately, but but I'm hoping, once we're able to fill that, then we'll, I'm, I'm hopeful that that will be a very good, very good thing for us.
Yeah, I, I thought she, i- in the sense that Doug and I have had communications with Lynn and, you know, that position that is authorized and is funded has not been filled because of the pandemic. So once we get through the pandemic, then the, the person will be hired. Uh, Lynn will be able to make sure that she makes the adjustments in her services and programs to use that, and then we can get a better baseline two years out.
Okay, that, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Awesome. Anything else for the library at this time?
Okay. Turn the page.
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much. Planning Board. I see the chairman and I saw Alan.
Yep, they're both here. They're somewhere on my screen. So I just saw Alan and Michael Thursday. How are you guys doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Um, so, uh, you know, we, yeah, we just had our, uh, capital, uh, committee meeting, um, which is the, you know, bigger portion of our budget. Um, our budget is pretty straightforward. We haven't changed much. You know, there really hasn't been much in the way of impact. Um, and frankly, you know, we're trying to put in a new, uh, bylaw that allows the Planning Board to retain consultants at the expense of the applicants, um, you know, sort of across the board if we need it. Um, you know, which would, uh, even, you know, reduce any need for, you know, to the extent there's anything in there that we could use for that, um, we wouldn't need it. So, um, I think, you know, we're, we're, the budget is, is, we've consistently, um, met the budget and, and actually, I think far below the budget each year. Um, and I don't see anything coming up this year that's gonna change anything. So the big thing is simply the, the, you know, the master plan, um, allocation, that's really what we're, we're really focused on. Um, and, um, you know, as I said to the Capital Committee, I mean, that's, we see that, um, it's really becoming a necessity at this point in time with, with a lot of the things that are coming down the pipe, whether it's, you know, the, the amount of growth in Southwick over the last fifteen, twenty years and, and where we're going from here. Um, the Green Communities Initiative that's coming down the pipe, um, changes generally in, in, um, you know, energy and, and green services, I think might be useful to, to, uh, incorporate into a master plan. And, you know, just the number of developments that I sort of foresee, I mean, the, the housing market has been moving along pretty well, it seems that, and I, I know at least three, four developments that are in the works right now, so. Um, getting a master plan, having guidance, um, you know, knowing what, what the community wants for Southwick, I think is a, is a useful exercise, uh, and, and getting more and more to be a necessity for us to be able to do our jobs properly. And I'll let Alan add whatever he, he wants to add as far as the more technical side of the, the budget.
Alan, I can't hear you.
Yeah, I can't hear you, Alan.
Uh, just unmute yourself, Alan.
He's not muted.
Yeah, he's not muted.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, just give him a minute. He might, he's had, this probably was concurred before, he's just got to call in, I believe.
I can, um, I can tell you the other, um, Mr. Chairman, that the other evening, we had an extensive conversation with Alan and the, uh, and Mike about the, uh, issue of the master plan and where things stand in the, uh, uh, Capital Expenditures Planning Committee, uh, made note of the fact that some of these components within it might be getting, um, funds from the CPC for the housing portion of it, so there are different components within it. So there may, it lends itself to different cost allocations from the CPC. Recognizing that and the overdue need to, uh, have this particular document updated, the Capital Expenditures Committee did uh, unanimously support this capital project going before your boards.
No, that's not correct.
What was it, six, oh, okay, excuse me, six to one was the vote. Right, Terry?
That's correct.
Okay, so it was, instead of unanimous, let the record show that it was, um, it was six to one.
Can I make a comment while we're waiting for Alan still? In light of the fact that our Board of Selectmen has waltzed us into the Green Communities Program, and in terms of consideration of alternative funding sources, does CPC play any role in, uh, helping with the master plan in terms of the Green Communities effort? And secondly, do we need to resolve the Green Communities participation issue before we jump to the master plan? Because they're definitely related in terms of, uh, alternative energy and zoning issues about that and all that kind of stuff. So are there possibilities for funding? And secondly, do we need to be cognizant of coordination between the Green Communities effort by our Board of Selectmen and the master plan endeavor?
So if I can offer, you know, my, my viewpoint of it is, um, you know, we've, we've spent a lot of time and effort looking for alternative sources of funding. We've, um, the Open Space Committee has um, put in, uh, countless hours developing an open space plan uh, that would be incorporated into the master plan without much expenditure. And the, uh, housing component of it is, is hopefully being done through CPC if we can, or CPC funds, if we can get that approved at town meeting. Um, you know, we are looking into the, the, um, you know, tied to Green Communities, but that sort of idea, that component of the master plan, the environmental, natural resources and energy component of it, to see whether there's any sort of funding out there to be able to incorporate that. I mean, we're, we're trying our best to minimize the amount the town has to spend. Um, we are seeking to get, you know, the amount that we think that we would need right now without any other funding, but we are taking every step we can to try to minimize it. And we've done, I think, a pretty good job to date, um, to take out some of those components of, of what we needed. Um, with respect to the Green Communities, um, I admittedly don't know as much as the Select Board knows about that and what the. And what the length of the process may be, so I would defer to them a little bit. But I I don't necessarily think. With the master plan being, you know, a at least a year, if not more in in length. I don't see there's going to be a huge issue trying to run those two things at the same time. I think they can both be incorporated, and I think, as I understand it. You know, we have a sense of what the Green Communities designation requires. And so, you know, that can be incorporated into the discussions and and the planning with the master plan.
Good, thank you.
I don't know if anybody can hear me now. For some reason, I'm having problems with my audio. My Michael is basically, my is basically cover everything. Our budget is very frugal, and we don't anticipate any large expenditures. And as far as, as far as the, the master plan. It's it's a valuable tool to the town to add for planning and for guidance for all the different departments in the town. That's about it, Michael did a good job.
I have, I have some questions or points. Cause I I sat in on that conversation last Thursday on Capcom. My own sense is that we're getting the cart before the horse. If you're looking to find out what the town would like as far as what they want, I could tell you, you know. They want to stop all growth, they want to. You know, reduce taxes, they want, you know, a bunch of things. So if you're, if we're going to spend money to ask that question, I that I don't think that's, that's the the way to go. I think, and I think this was brought up maybe by Carl or whatever, that we maybe come up with a, you know, let's get a group together. And I said that I would join it if I can, being on the finance committee. To. To look at the, at the, at the master plan, what we need to, where we need to go. Because frankly, I'm not, I mean, we've been talking about master plans for, you know. As long as I've been, you know, involved, that's, you know, probably twenty years or better on the planning board. But, you know, things that we don't know, like, we don't know what's going on with sewers. Because that would be a huge part of what, you know, what. What we need to know. You know, that, no, those things are very important, and we can, you know, talk till we're blue in the face, but, you know, we talk about putting the. A sewer lines in here or there, but the town can vote it down like they have the last two that we got proposed. And and, you know, until we can kind of put all of that together. You know, I don't want to spend money doing that, so I, you know, I think we should maybe just get get a committee. Like I said, I'd be more than happy to be on it. Where we, you know, get people together, look at what the green. Thing does with the sewer, you know, inflammation, yeah, thank you, the sewer group. You know, let's not get six people do it, let's get sixteen people together with, you know, and and. Try to figure out what we wanted, what do we want to see from the master plan? And things like we can get from the CPC, the housing, I mean, I don't even know. What would be, we'd be spending on the, you know, that money on, whether it's section eight housing or or what. So, I'm not real clear on what, you know, what we're going to look, what we're going to get out of this, actually a hundred thousand dollars, so. That's kind of my opinion, too early.
So, if I could just address, and I, Terry raised some of these concerns at the capital committee meeting. And I certainly respect Terry's opinion, he, you know, he's he's done a lot in this town and has had a lot of different roles and sort of knows. A lot about the town, so I certainly respect his opinion, I just simply, you know, disagree. I think, I think there's a component of the master plan. One, I think that having a master plan, having a sort of goal. That you were sort of working toward that represents what the community wants is is the proper way to conduct. You know, a board or planning board and and. Allows, allows the board members to act with with authority and with understanding of what the community wants. Secondly, you know, I think there's a second component to a master plan, which is that it becomes an educational tool to. Let the community know about, you know, a a bigger plan, you know, so they're not just looking at one little thing. So, I mean, the sewers is probably a good example, if you're talking about the sewers. You know, you're going to have people say, well, I don't want to spend the money on that, I mean, that's, and that's their focus, I don't want to spend the money on this sewer. This is not, it's not going to help me, I don't care, I'm not going to spend the money. If they see it in the concept of a master plan and what that sewer means to the community as a whole and and how everything fits together. That may be, you know, there's more considerations there than than an isolated expenditure of money. So I do think it has an educational purpose to it, and and I think would be useful going forward. With ideas about the sewer and 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 other aspects of of town commitments. You know, and then finally, I, it, at the end of the day, you know, I mean, not that it has mattered that much, but it is a required. It is required for a town to have a master plan, ours is, you know, some fifty something years old at this point in time. You know, it really has no, no use. And I I think that. You know, updating it now, and everybody can go, you know, I invite you to go take a look. You can actually go to the general laws and look at the statute to see what is required to be in there, but you can also go look at other communities and see. What they have for master plans, I mean, the most of them will put it on their website. And and you can kind of see what they've included in there and get a sense of it, but I think it's a, it's a useful document for. Not only the planning board, but other boards and committees in town.
Okay, well, I I want to be clear, I'm not against a master plan, I just think that. You know, I think that is a needed process, I just think that we're, you know. Putting the cart before the horse, because, you know. We need to see how a lot of these things, you know, go together, but certainly I'm not against a a master plan by any means.
Yeah, just to piggyback on on what Terry was saying. I have total faith in the planning board being able to develop their own survey. And, you know, you can research other master plans if you're not sure what all to include in that survey. But I think that that can be done in-house and maybe nail that out with the tax bills when they leave the clerk's office. And that way it goes to every home, but I I think the planning board could absolutely develop that questionnaire as to. What the residents want to see Southwick be or become. So, I I don't think we need to pay someone to do that for us. I think our planning board should be able to develop that survey on their own.
If I could say, if I could say the. Master plans are done by professional companies that have graphic abilities. As well as they they have full, they have full staff to do that work. Planning board is part time, I only work eighteen hours a week. And the rest of the people are are at night. And so it would be an injustice for us to try to do a comprehensive master plan in-house.
Not asking about that, and and. It's just a survey, and again, get some heads together and and, you know, have a couple meetings. And all you do is just. You know, get what questions you need, the best way to, you know, to get this out to the people. Again, I could tell you exactly what they're, you know, what. Generic questions are good, how they're going to get answered, they don't want any more development, they want more recreational opportunities. They want more blah, 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 you know, so it's not just a matter of that, it's getting some. You know, sort of maybe getting commitments more from from people, and the more people can get involved. The better, but again, I'm not, I'm not against spending good money to for a master plan and let the professionals. You know, whether they're writing the bylaws or they're for the future, or they're actually coming up with a plan. For that, but. Again, let's get a group together to, you know, to work on a direction. And frankly, you know. You know, I've been on the planning board, Doug's been on the planning board, we did a lot of things. You know, ourselves, we we wrote a lot of bylaws ourselves. You know, putting the time in, so. You know, I appreciate what the planning board does, but, you know, there's always more that they can do.
So, I just would say two things, one is, you know, I mean, I think if we did. Even even the survey part of it ourselves, I think you'd get what you paid for it, you know, we're not, we're we're not necessarily. You know, we have some ideas about about planning, we understand zoning, but, you know, none of us on the planning board. Have a real good sense of of, you know, what goes into the master plan, I think that's better left to to other folks. But I'd also just disagree with the idea that, you know, I mean, I appreciate that Terry may, you know, gets, talks to people in town and understands what some people think, but. I mean, I, just the idea that people don't want development, well, if people don't want development, then I would have expected to see a lot more people at that Southwood Country Club. Hearing than than were there, because there was essentially no opposition, other than in a butter who wanted to sort of. You know, get a little bit more out of the developer. And and that was satisfied, so if if, you know, if people in town really don't want it, then, then. Why aren't they showing up to to, you know, a development that's a good-sized development, I don't know what seventy-five, eighty houses, whatever it was. I just, I'm not necessarily sure that's the case, but if it is, then I think that, you know, this process will allow us to figure that out.
Now, the mystery of, the mystery of people showing up for things like that is still a mystery. But that's been going on for as long as I've been, I, you know, some of the meetings that you have. You think in the planning board, that big room there, you'd have more than three people in there who care, who seem to, you know, have an interest. And we've seen things there where there's. You know, overflow of people. Well, you know, for small things like customary home occupation or something like that, I think that one filled the room and. You know, in the hallway and and everything else, and so, anyway. Be involved and vote.
So if I could add my two cents as as a also former planning board member, and I think. I understand where Terry's coming from, I also understand where Mike's coming from. And I think there does need to be some activity towards a greater planning tool, you know, and some of it is going to be. And I don't know if a full-on master plan is the right answer, I think that I'm glad we're having this discussion, it's productive. In, there needs to be better coordination across different things, so we, you know, we mentioned sewer, we're in the middle of a. A water ban or a water connection moratorium, right? You know, perhaps additional planning, you know, looking around at how that water system was coordinated with. Potential development coming in and and looking at that, we might have been able to see some, you know. See some of the conflict that was coming, same thing with sewer, right? If the sewer was built out a little more. Organized with the planning, if if you're going to do certain residential development in certain areas or industrial development in certain areas where you would. Potentially plan out to bring sewers, there was also discussion around, I heard earlier this evening with Ed, with economic development around. You know, the industrial park, there's discussion that's been going on long range, but coming in, you know, starting to come into some level of fruition of extending. Hudson Drive to connect back to either Sam West or Tannery, to bring that as a through street. You know, but not having sewers in the industrial park, which is located over the wellhead. You know, presents its own set of challenges in attracting industrial talent and development to that space. And, you know, so those types of activities, so I, and I understand the cert, you know, the survey part is part and parcel of a of a master plan. But some of the, the zoning review and. Other infrastructure review that goes with that, I think, are relative to an overall master plan. And I think, you know, the document that we have is quite old, there was stuff from that master plan that actually happened, right, that came out of that. Flex rez, rail trail, a bunch of other things, so I think there was some some good to come of it. So I think the discussion needs to continue, maybe, you know. You know, what that needs to, you know, between Terry and and the and others that have, you know, that are stakeholders in this to just to. Discussion, because every year it comes up, and every year we kind of kick that can. And at some point, we're going to have to do some of it, because we're going to, you know, we're going to have to figure out some of these challenges that are going to be facing the town. There's going to be increased pressure for development, there's going to be increased pressure from others to. You know, everyone wants to be the last one in, we get it, right, that's just natural. But, you know, we're seeing, you know, the planning board also has a function, their key function in town is is it is as the planning and visioning. Role for that, and you've primarily. Today, they function very much as an administrative board, right? They hear bylaw changes and so on and so forth, but primarily, they've been an administrative board, you know, hearing subdivision applications and. You know, cell tower applications and so on and so forth, so part of their role is is to be this planning thing. So to advocate for an update to their master plan is certainly within their. Their wheelhouse. And as far as the tying it together with the green, the green piece, there's some statutory requirements under that. Mr. Fox is way more familiar with it than I. But as far as, you know, what needs to go in front of town meeting under zoning to, in order to comply with the Green Communities Act. And, you know, some of the the onerous things that were part of the Green Community thing have kind of taken care of themselves. As far as being incorporated in the state building code and so on and so forth, so they're not as onerous as they used to be. And then the funding mechanisms that come with Green Communities is mostly around, is project-based, right? So, there's different projects that could be undertaken when you are a Green Community that are eligible for funding. Some of them fairly significant, especially when they involve the schools, which would take. Some burden off the taxpayers for some large capital projects that are upcoming at the schools, so. That's all I have to say about that. Is there anything else from the, anyone else on the finance committee or? Select board that want to speak to any of this, or are we all set with the planning board at this time? Fantastic, we're right up against our break, shall we take a five-minute break at this point? So how do we do that, do we take a motion to to? Carl, how does that work?
Just do your, you just do a break motion.
Okay. So is there a motion to take a five-minute recess until nine twenty? You're supposed to do a roll call vote, but if there's any objections, speak now. Okay, board will stand and recess.
Everybody's doing a roll call vote with that, because I think everybody concurred with that.
Okay, nine twenty.
Doug. Can anybody hear me? I just want to make sure I using my laptop or my iPad. I just want to make sure you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Okay, thanks.
No problem. Carl, are you still there? Did you step away? Carl stepped away.
Hey Randy.
Hey Bob, how you doing today?
Not too bad. Not too bad.
I just logged in. Where are you on the agenda?
We just, we're at the break. So we're doing the town accountant, we're doing Laura next.
Okay.
Computer, lake management, then DPW, you're at nine forty-five, but. I'm wondering if we'll.
Well, like 10 o'clock at least.
Yeah, probably.
Okay, that's fine. I, that's fine.
And Randy, I want to thank you for the detail in the breakout of your budget. It was very easy to understand just reading it without even talking to you.
Oh, well, I appreciate that. That's why I'm trying to make it easy for you. So.
So.
Good to hear.
I appreciated it when I looked through it.
Yep.
Carl, I want to thank you. I just finished my virtual donut. It was delicious. You know, just a tremendous idea.
Well, Russ, you know, I've been talking to Sue. We, we thought. Virtual is the way to go. It's much better on the caloric intake.
Thank you very much, Mr. Steinhardt.
Although we do miss, we do miss.
Mr. Mish, what is that? A virtual donut?
Yes, it is. It's going to virtually taste good.
We, we do miss the healthy choices we got last year when Karen brought that's that nice stuff in.
I was just gonna.
Very nutritious.
I was just gonna say, I do have virtual yogurt parfaits in the refrigerator.
Oh, yeah, I gotta, I gotta tell you that between that and the produce and the coffee and the donuts, we had a great time last year. The, the menu was awesome.
All right, is everybody back? If you're not back, raise your hand.
Dick, we can always see the top of your head. There you go.
That's better. It was getting shiny, Eric.
Unfortunately, we're all getting that way.
Okay. The next contestant is the town accountant. I saw Laura Fletcher. There she is. Hi Laura.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Laura.
So for the accounting office this year, we need to increase our training and conference line. To accommodate some trainings for our, were new assistant town accountant. So she can get some more education. To learn about the position and the. UMS manual, which is the uniform municipal. Accounting standards. There's a class out in the eastern part of the state. We'd like to send her to, to, to six day trainings. Given that they're going to have them. And the other thing that we need is a new printer for our accounting office. Our was purchased in 2012. It is the only printer that we have in our office and it's used by three of us and it's all of our accounting. Stuff is printed off of that.
So Laura, obviously under your training budget. Securing your. Training, your regular training and your certification as a. A government accountant and then as well as the process of your assistant. Go and pursuing that accreditation. And I given to members of the select board and the finance committee before about the. The reports done by the state to make sure that the financial officers in each community. Go through these processes to get trained and accredited. So if anybody needs a copy of that report again, I can give it to them.
I have a question.
Okay.
In terms of the laser printer jet.
Yeah.
Whatever. Do we look at multiple vendors when we purchase something like that? For price for. Different options.
We generally, you know, get a quote from one of our local vendors to give us an estimate. If we need to do, you know, the three quotes we could.
Well. Yeah, the question, the question in my mind is not whether we should or not, or whether it's more as like. Whether it's a good practice to shop around a little bit. Or a possibly better deal, maybe not. Maybe you go with the same person you've gone with the last 27 years. That's fine, but I think it's, it's helpful to, or could be instructive to look around a little bit too.
Yeah, there's no, there's no issue with that. There's no harm in getting three quotes.
Okay, thank you.
Laura, did you want to mention about the fiscal year 23 or 24 that?
Oh, yes.
Update. Cause that, that'll be some big dollars.
That will be some big dollars. We'd like to hire a consultant to come in and help us redesign our chart of accounts. For our accounting system. To get that more in line. With the uniform Massachusetts accounting system. But that can be, you know, 23, 24, just looking out.
Laura, is that a change at the state level?
It's. It's not necessarily a state at the state level. They gave us, they have a chart of accounts and ours is not. Could use some improvement, just in the way the accounts are set up so that it's easier to run. Some of our accounts in reports. But it will take, you know, a consultant to come in and help us to. To set these up. In the proper format. It's not that we're doing anything. You know. You know. It's just that they just need to be cleaned up so we can run more efficiently.
So when you, so when you say cleaned up, are you talking about reprogramming your present unit system?
Just assigning new account number so that, you know. Everything is uniform. Across. You know, all the. All departments. And the different funds.
Are you just talking about like, let's say the, the first line item is, is, is in, in, in it is accounting.
Yeah.
And, and usually a chart of accounts is alphabetical or whatever. Are, are, are chart of accounts not in line with theirs or are theirs? A hodgepodge not, and not alphabetical or?
Ours aren't necessarily ours. The, it's more on the account segments is how it's set up and that's how UMS is. Set up. But some of the things. The actual line item. Account numbers couldn't be different. Things in different departments. So one line item might be supplies for one department. It may be something else for another department. So it's trying to clean up those little things and then. Kind of fine tune some of the different funds that are set up.
So Laura, are the consulting fees for the sort of technical aspect within the system, or are they? Really just the, are they the sort of envisioning what the mapping is going to look like? Or is it all of the above?
It's probably all the above. It's looking and how do we? Want it set up, you know, how does it, it doesn't have to, you know, entirely match the state, but the flow, it's just. Is it? How can we better set it up so that it's, we can use it? You know, more efficiently.
So, so from your attendance at these government accounting classes, you're going to. That this is an issue that we should examine.
Yes, it is an issue to examine.
Are there any grant funds available, you know, similar to what we did for our IT to improve government?
I, I don't know. I mean, obviously, there could be a. She could look at the unity compact program. Other categories, I mean, Laura. Successful in helping us secure two. Community compact grants for IT related issues. So there may be issues in other areas or categories of best management practice. Where she could look at that. And she can, she can do that in preparation of, of a future year's budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And Laura, how would realigning the chart of accounts impact, for example, this process when you're trying to compare year over year? Over, you know, one, two, three, four years, five year budget. Projections, when you try to present this data to us, how would that affect? That?
We would. We would keep a list of what the old account numbers are versus the new account numbers. Because what, what you guys get is not. Generated out of the system. This is something that we manually key in all of the data. So we would just have to keep the. The chart of accounts from one to the new.
Thank you.
So would this process be automated Laura? In a new system?
We would like to get there to have it automated. Where we. Yeah, that where we, our accounting system, the way we set up the chart of accounts in the. The money that is carried forward. Where is put into a prior year account numbers. So with. So that's what makes it difficult for us to generate something out of our system is we have two sets of. General ledger account numbers for one for the current year and one for prior year and trying to combine those two. To give you what has been expensed.
So changing the list of accounts is actually going to make that process more difficult.
It may or it may not, you know.
Well, that's a future year thing. So let's, we'll, we'll look to answer those questions that Mr. Fox raised.
Yeah.
And how that works with the current. Software vendor too.
Yeah.
A time to work on this.
Okay, further questions for. For this topic. Before we move on to computer system admin. Okay, moving on to computer system admin. Laura.
Sorry, just switching. Switching over. So the two lines that we are, you know, looking to increase is of course our hardware software maintenance line. I've given you a list of, you know, just. Some of them are. Just increases. In the maintenance and contracts agreements, the annual agreements with them. You know, there, so you can see from the list, you know, we're requesting, you know, we requested last year 125, 125,000. We now would like 127,000. For that. And then. As you know, we've been discussing the managed service provider. Trying to get that. Up and going and. We're still fine tuning. Some of the numbers, but I did want to give you, you know, an estimated that the. The monthly support fees would be, you know, roughly this year would be 67. Thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And then along with that, there is some. Software that we would need to. To use. And. We. We received a grant this year where we can. Purchase the, some of this licensing. So we really only for this year, we only have, we're, you know, estimating at this point. Eight thousand dollars to use for this. In FY twenty-two.
Right, and obviously, the, the, the managed service provider approach is also the, uh, the alternative for bringing in a higher level paid department head with IT backgrounds and all the other costs that go with that in terms of pension and OPED benefits and all that. So we would just go through a process of getting quotes from different who participate under the, the state bid programs.
So in total, you know, with the software and the, you know, monthly fees, you know, a little over $78,000 for this year. And then I just kind of wanted to show you that it would be about $94,000 in FY23, because we would no longer have that grant to help cover the software cost.
Okay, well, this is not a new issue. This has been coming for a couple of years.
And the town also just received another, uh, grant from the state to fund a cybersecurity training for all town employees and a cybersecurity awareness campaign for all town employees. This has been a hot topic throughout the country with different, um, whether their health facilities and schools and so on and so forth, having issues with IT security and, and the damage that's been caused. And, and also part of that grant is a refresh to the cybersecurity analysis of the town's infrastructure as well. So that should go, be helpful, and that's being run by a third party out of Eastern Mass. So it's kind of having another set of eyes looking at what's going on in Town Hall and, and fire and police and the library, uh, to, to make sure that we're doing all that we can be doing in that space.
Laura and I sat through that, um, official briefing the other day. The chairman has signed, uh, the contract and the board is going to vote on that Monday evening so that we can formally accept it. And that'll allow us to try to provide required cybersecurity training to upwards of 150 employees and volunteers on, um, you know, fire and, and things of that in terms of those agencies. So that's underway. It's, and it's, it's going to be at least about a year-long process. So we'll, um, we'll see where that goes. And then we also recently received, a few months ago, another $57,000 award from the Mass Executive Office of Technology. So, um, so, and again, that, that goes along with an earlier $100,000 grant we got two years ago. So we've been able to, along with the funds that you've been appropriating locally at town meeting, uh, we've been able to leverage these other dollars coming from the Community Compact Program, um, service managed by the, the Lieutenant Governor's Office.
Questions or comments?
I'd just like to make one quick comment, Mr. Chairman. I think we're very fortunate because of the staff and particularly Chairman Moglen with his background, uh, which has helped us to secure all this grant funding. So kudos to, uh, the chairman and our staff.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we're up to 9:30 in Lake Management. I can't believe we're within seven minutes of being on time. This is awesome.
Thank you, Laura and Melissa.
Thank you. Yep. Lake Management. I see Mr. Grinnell's. I saw Dr. Muller.
Can you see me again?
I can see you again. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. I can take you through, we figured we'd take you through the budget requests, if that's all right. We'll run through that first. We can do that pretty quickly, because most of it is kind of the, the same year after year, a couple items.
Dick, I have one quick question. When we go to do the PowerPoint, do you have that available to pull up, or do I need to get over to?
I don't know. Do?
Oh, okay. All right. So I will, I have to transfer it between two computers. That'll take me a moment, but I'll do that while you're talking about the budget, and I'll be able to pull it up.
Okay, so first page, um, Form One for Lake, oh, let me go, I'm sorry. I had it flipped. I was going through it before myself. Um, so on Lake Management, Sheet One, and we are trying to retain the $1,000 for, uh, lake level rainfall capital. What we've been doing is over the years, building a system that'll all be online when we're done. It's all done by volunteers. Uh, Charlie Dunlap, Chuck Darling, myself, and we've been assembling this weather station and lake, um, basically assessment. It'll give us water temperature and levels in the two, in the two outflows, the canal and the Great Brook and the lake level itself. So we, we know what action to take, uh, down on the Canal Brook where we have the weir gates, and we're hoping eventually to get another S319 grant so we can put the same kind of level control at the Berkshire Avenue Culver, which right now just has boards that are kind of rotting. Uh, so that, we're trying to do on the outside with, uh, grant funds. Up on the, before I forget, we had asked for enough to increase, uh, Annie's hours to, to 300. She's taking on more responsibilities, a lot of things that I was doing, uh, for all the purchase orders, all the, uh, reporting for, uh, you know, everything to keep track of, of, uh, where we are funds and, and, uh, paying the bills. So I still am trying to do most of that, but want to get somebody else trained to, uh, continue that work. So it's not just one person. Um, and then the next few forms, the, uh, there are no new requests, no salary requests, and no operations line item requests. So those forms are all zero. So that takes us to, um, the five-year projections. And last year, we lost the, it was originally in there, the $2,000 for buoys. It kind of hurt us because we literally lost five buoys that were destroyed on the lake this past year. I don't know whether this was just due to COVID and a lot of new boaters or, or people just deliberately hitting them. Don't know. But they literally were totaled. They're ones that were, uh, trashed. So we did not have any money this past fiscal '21 to purchase buoys, but, but fortunately, between Chief Bishop and Carl, and they worked out some, some funding. So we are trying to replace those right now and get ready for the oncoming season. But we're still, would be in the hole for damages incurred during this coming season, which would be funded by FY22. So we want to try and make sure that $2,000 does stay in this year. Um, so we, we do replace about four buoys each year. And we have 20, but we now have 28 buoys.
Dick, so, uh, is the stuff that Kevin and I signed off replacing all the buoys?
No, no, that's replacing what got destroyed.
Okay.
Yeah. And those purchase orders have actually been placed.
Yep. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Some of that was the, the police chief's, uh, line items that helped pay for, um, you know, these issues, because he is the harbor master. And then some of the other funds were Lake Permit Program funds, which are funds that specifically cover these types of safety issues. Good, good. Um, and our security cameras, we, we still have to keep replacing those. They do not last indefinitely. We've got, um, three that are on the way out. They're seven years old. Usually we try and plan that they, they last five years. Uh, they do see a lot of tough weather, and, you know, all of them are exposed. There's, these are not interior type cameras. They are designed for outside, but they do take some tough weather. Um, and they're on 24/7, 365. And they have helped us, they've helped the police significantly over the decades that we've had, uh, cameras at both, both ramps, uh, with, uh, any activities that go on that are not necessarily legal, uh, or accidents or, or whatever. So it's provided a lot of information to them for, uh, follow-up. So we want to make sure that we keep those cameras alive, uh, and that's what that's for. So we just, we plan, as you can see on the bottom, you know, for the five years, an annual replacement. And, uh, and we do have to eventually, every about five years, replace a DVR. They don't, they also do not last forever. And they have to have larger memory, because all the cameras that are out there now are HD cameras. So they, they require a lot more, uh, memory.
I just want to remind everybody that anything, anytime we're dealing with the deployment of security devices like that, it's, it is something that falls under the purview of the select board, and those cameras or the DVR or the recordings can only either be at the Lake Management Contact Station or in the police dispatch. They're not authorized to be anywhere else.
That's correct, and that's the way it's run. And if, if the police need it, they can come down, we can either give them the information that they're looking for, or they can go down and view it.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, it's not, this is not available online.
Right, there are certain, you know, protections and protocols that have to be addressed anytime you're deploying security camera devices.
Yeah. Okay, and, uh, the, on the lake restoration, the lake weed control, that's one that's shared three ways with Suffield, CRC, and, and Southwick. The consultant, excuse me, next line item is, again, that's shared by Southwick and Suffield, not, uh, so it's a two-way split. The water sample testing, uh, that's also split with Suffield, and I keep track of every one of those POs and expenditures. And we send Suffield a, a list and copy of all of the payables that we have associated with that line item. And the last one, the Canal Brook Beaver Dam, that's a just in case. We, we did not spend it this year. Hopefully we'll not have to spend it since we're near the end of the year. Uh, but the problem is, is there's about a half a mile of great, of Canal Brook that is not accessible from the shore. It's all wetlands surrounding it. So DPW can't get in there with a, with any of their equipment. It has to come in from water, and we have contracted in the past with, uh, solitude to come in with a, a barge with a big claw on the end of it and, and remove all the debris. That's our main outlet. It keeps us, keeps the, uh, lake from flooding homes and, and like that.
Now, Dick, I, I noticed that as an operational line item. If you're not going to end up using that this year, and it just is going to go back to free cash, and then you want to appropriate it again for next year, I'm wondering whether or not we could, you could speak, uh, put a request together for me, and we could maybe have the, uh, Selectment and the Finance Committee at the year end just transfer those funds from an operational account to a capital account, then they'd be, then they could remain there, and then we wouldn't have to put dollars in the budget for the next year. So that's one issue.
Yeah.
And then the other issue where you were looking for the consultant for the lake assessment, well, we, we just finished the alum treatment, so that's a big part of assessing the lakes, whether or not you've got, um, some of the leftover alum bond treatment money or the operational money, where we could just, um, encumber some of those capital dollars toward that effort, and then we could reduce that by five so that you're still held harmless, we're just doing it a different way.
Okay, yeah, that's not.
So are you amenable to looking at that?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Eric, you too?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so let's make a note to, to look into that.
Okay, and I did so noted.
Because that could, that could allow us to still deal the issues, but reduce the request by 10,000.
Okay. And the, uh, the next sheet for Lake Restoration, we have withdrawn the request, uh, for the design and permitting as that's, and also for the dredging, because we, I have been working with, uh, Senator Markey's office and the NRCS, and we're trying to get an NRCS project where they actually do the design and the permitting and the work for dredging the canal. And, you know, so it would be those two items, the 120K and the 500K, as a federal project, not as a town project. The other alternative there that we are still trying to do is if they ever release any funding from the $2 million environmental bond bill, that's money that could be used for that, because there's explicitly $2 million that sits in there, but it's not, it's not there. It's there, but it's not. You just, you can't just go reach in and take it. So if that winds up being released by the governor, uh, then we could use that state funding to accomplish it. So either way, it would not be town funds.
Cool.
And the next sheet, there's no new positions requested. And the last one is what we just talked about, the $5,000 annual. And I like that idea. We can roll it year to year if we put it in capital, because it's really a just in case. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Okay, we can go to, if you'd like, if Eric can pull that up.
Yeah, I'm going to do that right.
Do you have to enable him to do that?
Hmm? I think it's going to let me do it. Uh...
There we go.
I think you guys are looking at it.
Yes, I see it, Eric.
All right, great.
I'll take you through the first few sheets. If we can go to the next one.
Yeah, hang on, I'm just, I was going to expand it a little bit, but okay, sure.
Page two.
Is this, uh, is this readable, or should I change into a display mode, or?
No, it's good.
No, I, I can see it. I got the.
It's nice and clear, if everybody can there.
Yeah.
Let's go. Get it done.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Next sheet.
Yep. Right, three. Um, so Dick, you want me to talk, speak to this?
No, if you can move it to the next sheet.
I did. What are you looking at?
I'm only looking at the first, at the cover page.
Oh, that's interesting, uh, because I'm looking at page two.
Right, for some reason it didn't.
Moment, uh, give me a moment. Let me try putting it into slideshow mode. That may...
There we go.
I see it now. Perfect.
Okay, good. All right.
Right. So basically, what we've, uh, what we've been doing with water quality is, is the, we've had super cooperation with, uh, CRC and Suffield for sharing costs for weed removal, which we do annually, by the way. We assess the, uh, the, the invasives in the spring, late spring, and then treat, uh, early summer. And again, in the fall, that gets reassessed to see how did we do, uh, for the, for that season. And the, again, the algae and lymnologists, if we have to treat, we hope we don't, that, uh, for algae, but our, uh, our lymnologist, anyway, supports us year-round. It's, it's one of those things, you know, we, if we find something strange, uh, he is involved immediately, and he checks the, the actual water samples and tells us what, what we have to do. Uh, alum treatment, we were very fortunate, last year was a last minute thing. We were, uh, we actually did the treatment between end of March and mid-May, and was, uh, we also had a Eurasian water milfoil and curly leaf pond weed treatment on the first of June. So we, and we continue the water quality monitoring. That's Eric and Rick Wylott, and they take multiple samples, uh, every month and a lot of daily samples.
Yeah.
But we do send them to a lab for actual testing, and, uh, and we keep track of that. Eric does a phenomenal job of, of retaining all that data, analyzing it, putting out graphs and charts and, and everything else. So, uh, and we, and Eric, you can continue on, on,
Eric, I was going to ask Eric a question. Eric, with the, um, now that the alum treatment's been done, is that going to help at all with the Eurasian milfoil issue?
No, 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 that, that doesn't address invasive weeds.
Okay.
In fact, the weeds will probably like it. In fact, the weeds will probably like it, the water's better.
Okay. They like sunlight.
The invasive, the invasive weeds don't realize that they don't have a green card and that's supposed to be here. So they're here anyway. Okay. So what are we doing and been doing, of course, monitoring, you know, still the same management, building the data we need. Which we've already, you know, we did a lot to be able to take the actions that we took. And of course, funding for actions, canal restoration, grapebook restoration and, and removing nutrient-rich muck. Of course, the big thing that was on there for every year until this year was the alum treatment. So basically in 2020, a big thing was the alum treatment. The treatment went off as planned. Special thanks for everyone involved who came up with a creative way. Of enabling us to hold a town meeting within the constraints we had of COVID. I was really impressed, you know, after all this work. At the end, I'm like, oh God, now we're not going to be able to get it because we can't hold the town meeting. But we did hold the town meeting and, and that vote went through and that was terrific. So 2020 looked very good. You know, as Ken Wagner tells us, you know. Really the second year tells the story of, you know, if, if you've really, you know, if the alum treatment is really done what you wanted it to. Yes, it looks like it has. Let's see how 2021 looks. So that just means we're going to continue our regular monitoring monthly and daily. So one big thing for 2020 was an algae bloom management, no blooms for the first time in, within a decade. So that was tremendous. The condition summary, the clarity was significantly improved post alum treatment. The achievable clarity is limited by owl wife that are in the lake. Owl wife is invasive in the sense that it doesn't belong there. Mass fisheries and wildlife put it in there.
Thank you.
The, the issue with owl wife is they consume beneficial zooplankton which feed on algae. And so, so for example, we're seeing clarities of, you know, let's say. 11 feet, I can convert meters to feet, you know, we're seeing clarities through the whole time of something like 11 feet, which is a big improvement over what we used to have. Similar lakes in New England that have been treated with the alum, they see clarities of 30 feet. And it's the owl wife that limits what we can do. But overall, still the best clarity that we've had in more than a decade. So anybody who goes out on the lake, I'm sure noticed it this year. So just an overview, of course, this is a phosphorus inactivation treatment. Again, a multi-year effort started with our extensive data-taking campaign analysis, continued. With an exhaustive pursuit of funding options, culminating with the approval of funding. Thank you, everyone. The treatment was performed, it really in April through early May. Measurements were performed prior to treatment, during treatment and after treatment, and a full report was delivered to us by, by our lymnologist. And the water quality monitoring continued through the year. So the treatment zones, basically if you look, you know, here's a map of the, of the lakes. Sure whether you, let me put the little laser pointer on. Laser pointer. I think you can see it now, right?
Yes.
So basically, the lake was broken up into treatment zones. No adjacent zones were treated without a pause. Each zone was covered multiple times. North Pond, which needed the least inactivation. The zones got covered two times each, middle pond and south pond four times each. And active monitoring adjustments both before and after the treatments each day. And our lymnologist was following the treatment boat with his own boat. Actually evaluating the water chemistry as they went so that they could be making adjustments on the fly. For those of you who didn't see it, this is kind of a, this is Solitude's treatment boat and it's kind of an overgrown pontoon boat. Very overgrown. These outer pontoons had to be removed in order to fit through the tunnel to get into South Pond. They're very large tanks on board for the treatment solutions and a special purpose application boom, which you actually see deployed out here. And a smaller boat was new, used in North Pond. For folks who remember the way that the first alum treatment on this lake was ever done. Which is one of the first alum treatments ever done in New England anywhere. The situation was nowhere as near as sophisticated. They basically put a tanker truck on a barge and sprayed a hose behind it. You know, now, now this is, is a, a very common practice and they really know how to do it.
All GPS located.
So if, if we take a look, these are just some different things we were looking at during days of treatment. This is chlorophyll A versus days of treatment. This is on middle pond and you can see just like you want to see it, it coming down. Turbidity coming down. So basically as the turbidity comes down, the clarity goes up. And oxygen, you'd like to see that stay fairly constant and it did. And so for example, just during the treatment, we went from a clarity of 6.6 feet to 12.8 feet, just in that timeframe.
Eric, is, is, does this, as the, the, the lake doctor comes out and looks at it again. Does this situation lend itself where you think we'll need to do some spot treatments of alum in some other, some locations?
No, no, that's, that's usually not the way this, this plays out. The, because you get spread over time. So no, I, I think it's unlikely that there'll be any sort of a follow-up alum treatment. You know, I think, you know, we, we've, we've done the treatment. Now it's a matter of monitoring exactly how the lake chemistry evolves.
One thing, one thing I'd like to add to that is that the treatment is only in the deeper waters. It's not the shoreline muck, you know, where we have three, four, or five feet of water and a couple of feet of muck. That isn't, that can't be treated because the wave action. And, and boats and everything in and out, in and out disturb the whole bottom. And this, this, that process does not work where you, you churn everything that's on the bottom. So we, that's part of the long-term management plans for Congamon is to seek state and or federal funding. To dredge those shallow areas. And that's, that's a lot of money. We're, we're talking about $6 million.
Well, depending on how we go at it, right? Because one of the discussions is to see if we can get, get a dredge or get the, the. DPW, the, you know, not our local one, but the state DPW to buy a dredge.
And that was one of the things that both Nick Baldi and, and back when Don Helmeson was there, they were working on that. Possibility for the state acquiring dredges and locating them at their mass dot facilities. And they would take over doing the actual work.
Yeah. So, so basically I put the MACBAP back up so you can see in the littoral areas. Around the outside where you get in near the shore, there's no treatment of, as Dick was saying, you, you can't really treat there. And there's a lot of phosphorus-bearing material in there. That's the muck. And so yes, we would like, we would like to see if we can get a dredge in over time. And the idea being if there were a dredge available, you know, maybe once a year, you know, we could do one or two coves each year. And over the years, you know, just get the phosphorus out and improve both the water quality and effectively the property values. You know, because all these, all these people have, you know, really mucky areas right out in front of their, in front of their property, if we took that out. You know, the, the thing about our lake is below the muck, it's all sand. It's, you know, 14,000 years ago, this lake had no muck in it at all. That's old, sand bottom lake. And if you take the muck out, that's what's under there, sand. So it would be a great improvement for people.
Okay, we can make, we can move along.
Yep. Okay, go ahead, Dick. You want to take over from this?
So can we, can we see this at like some other point in time? I mean, we're running way behind here now.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm very interested in this, but you know, we, this is, we're, we're, we're holding up a number of people already, just.
I'll just say that we're going to continue getting funding through state and federal sources. That will summarize those two.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks very much.
We're done. Thank you. Start, I mean, we gotta, we just gotta wrap it up. I'm real interested in it though. I'd like to see this maybe even at a town meeting, this presentation.
Okay.
Be happy to do that.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Any questions, any remaining questions for lake management before we move on to DPW sewer and solid waste?
Mr. Chairman, one quick comment, you know, and I think Dr. Muller alluded to it. As a former assessor, the more money we put into the lakes, cleaning them up, especially the muck along the shoreline. I know in the past, we've had to give abatements to landowners because they no longer had access. To the waters because of the conditions. And so once we clean this up, it, it does produce additional revenue for the town of Saliva. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Good morning, Mr. Brown.
Morning. How you guys doing today?
Great, super.
So I don't know the best way to do this. I, I think in the past I've, I've given a supplemental handout. Kind of summarizing the changes from past year's budget. I can go over that, that spreadsheet if you like. Or we can go each individual budget line by line, whatever, you know, suits your fancy.
It's up to you, however you'd like to present it, sir.
All right. Why don't we just do the, the, the handout then with all the changes? I can bring it up on my screen, Doug, if. See if I can share it.
Is this, is this in the packet or is this separate?
I think it was sent to you either with a packet or separately. It was, I think.
It was sent separate. Yep. But I, you should be able to share it, Randy.
Okay, yep, just popped up here. Can you see it yet?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, perfect. Manage, control on it now. There we go. Okay. So I'll start off with the highway to budget. Not many changes in highway, other than some of these capital items. Oh, I, I got the wrong spreadsheet. My apologies here. That's for Capcom. Can you see it now? I have two screens. I'm not sure which one you can see.
I'm seeing highway account to the highway.
Yep, okay.
For the pavement, Randy.
Okay, thank you. I might have been. All right. So, so the first item here, these are the capital items for all of our paving and infrastructure projects. The first three line items, I'll kind of group together for paving, construction and improvements. These are carryover numbers that we get pretty much every year. We're just looking to keep those same numbers from last year. These are about dollars that we use for smaller, small-scale paving and drainage projects. At various locations around town. We also use these funds for patching potholes as well. So those are carryovers from, from past years. This line item here for paving and infrastructure improvements for the budget request is for $3 million. We can just drive around town and see all the deterioration at the many roads, especially this time of year. This is, you know, prime season for potholes. Certainly the past couple of years, we've been very, we're very grateful to get some dollars. Two years ago, we got $2 million. Last year, we got $1 million. For paving and infrastructure projects. We want to keep that ball rolling. Certainly I'm asking for $3 million, but you know, really any, any, any bit's going to help. There's a slew of projects we can dedicate these funds towards. There is a handout in, in this packet, which kind of summarizes those projects. And we can talk about those if you'd like. Otherwise, just, just know that there's a general request for, you know, a large dollar item for paving projects. Any questions on these highway items before I move on? Okay, hearing none. Moving on to road machinery. So these are some changes. From last year's budget. The first item here is a, is a operations budget line item for uniforms. Last year, our budget was $4,400. We're looking to increase that to $4,800. We have a contract with, with a third-party vendor to supply uniforms to the DPW operators. That contract usually goes up about 3% every year. That's through a state contract. And then also this being a year where we are finalizing negotiations through the union. There is a clause in that contract, I believe, that's still in there, that we will supply sweatshirts to all the employees. You know, upon signing of that contract. So this will cover the sweatshirts plus that increase in price for the uniforms. You're going to see this uniform line item carried over to other departments as well, water, sewer, as, and solid waste, as those items fall under their budgets. The next item here is a tractor. We've talked about this. I think this is a third or fourth year I put a request in for this tractor. We have a 1995 Kubota tractor. We use that for roadside mowing primarily. Due to condition, this, this equipment has seen little use. We have a lot of issues, safety issues. And because of the age of the machine, it's, it's difficult to find replacement parts. So what we're looking to do is replace this with a, a new, a new tractor. Your John Deere tractor, there's a proposal, there's a quote in the packet. But it has a combination of a flail mower and a boom mower. That will help speed up our roadside activities. Right now, we just have two tractors. One does a boom, the other, so the other one does a, a flail. So we can expedite the, the roadside mowing with, with this new tractor. Next item here is a hot box. So we have a 2010 hot box that we use for patching potholes. We get mixed, hot mix either through an asphalt plant or we produce it here on site. And we use this hot box to keep that asphalt warm as we truck it around town to all the sites where we need to patch potholes. So this machine is, is hit its age. It's about 10, 11 years old. And we've had issues with the burner system in particular over the past few years. We do do our best to keep it running, but you know, we're putting more and more money into it. And I think at this point it makes sense to replace that with a newer machine. The newer hot boxes are, have a larger capacity, so we can haul around hot more mix at any one given time. There are also some other features on it with a tack coat and a spray nozzle. Those are, those are just features that help us lay asphalt, lay, lay, lay potholes that be more efficient and let them hold much longer. The third, third item is a dump truck. We have a 2005 International Dump Truck. We use these, we have five trucks in our fleet. They're used for plowing, hauling gravel, stone, other materials. We've had a lot of issues with this truck with corrosion, hydraulic lines. We've put quite a bit of money into it. So we are looking to purchase a new vehicle to replace, to take that machine off the road. So the number here is $260,000. We just got a phone call from the vendor yesterday about that price. They are curious if we were still looking to purchase this machine. They have told us, this is yesterday, that there is a potential 5% to 7% increase on the body of this truck. I'm waiting to hear back what that dollar value is going to be, but it could potentially be somewhere in the range of $8,000 to $10,000 increase. They are looking to know if we were still committed to this, buying this dump truck. And they're asking their other vendors, other municipalities as well, that same question. My feeling is that if they get enough support from other municipalities, that the, that price increase may be on the lower end. But if they don't get that commitment from others, that that price increase will be on the high end. So I know we're going through our process. We did tell them that I can't give them any firm answer for right now, certainly not right now, and maybe not for another month or so. So I know we're going through our process. We did tell them that I can't give them any firm answer for right now, certainly not right now, and maybe not for another month or so. Um, but, uh, I want you to keep that in mind, and I'm gonna keep, uh, uh, we'll be keeping in contact with that vendor about that price, if that does need a change, uh, before we get the final number for the budgets. Uh, paving box, that's a new item for us. This is a, uh, a machine that we can use to do our own paving projects. Not like a, we're not, we won't be doing a, a whole road, but we can do, uh, travel lanes, small sections at any one given time. We do not have the capability to do this right now, but, uh, this is a, uh, attachment that, that attaches to the back of a dump truck. And we, uh, drag behind, uh, this paving box, and it spreads out the asphalt in a smooth, even layer. So we only can pave, you know, small sections or pat, you know, pothole type sections at any one given time. But if we have locations where we need a pretty significant, um, area that, that should be paved, um, we can use this paving box and, and do that work in-house as opposed to, um, uh, as opposed to, uh, hiring a contractor to be there work for us. Uh, the third, next item here is a wheel loader. This is, uh, to replace a nineteen eighty-four John Deere loader that we use right now at the transfer station. We have another loader, which is a nineteen ninety-nine John Deere loader, so twenty years old. That's the one that we primarily use, the highway department. The thought process here is to take that nineteen ninety-nine, uh, trailer, uh, loader, bring that down to the transfer station, and then we would, we would, we would, um, surplus the old loader, and then keep this new machine as our primary, primary loader, uh, moving forward to the highway department. The nineteen ninety alone loader, uh, we've had issues with it. We spent about over five thousand dollars in the past twelve years, uh, the engine issues, tires. Um, there's, um, uh, again, the, this machine is twenty years old. It's, uh, every year, we, we put more and more money into it. We want to be able to make sure that these vehicles are consistently on the road for us and not, and not out of service. We have a couple of, uh, new attachments that we're looking to get for a Bobcat machine that we purchased last year. One is an Auger, the second one is a Root Capler, and the third is a Bow Pusher. These are the, these are attachments that will help us just do any type of various roadway work in infrastructure projects. Um, they're not, uh, things that we have now, but, uh, certainly, they would be very beneficial for our guys. It would help us, uh, do these projects much more efficiently in the past, as we have in the past. Any questions on road machinery projects before I move on to engineering? Okay, hearing nothing. Engineering, so this is the primary budget we use to meet our MS four stormwater permit requirements. So these line items you have seen, uh, in the past, and the way I, we have set this up is, uh, every, every year, our permit conditions change. So, one year, we may be required to do more testing and sampling than others. Uh, and there may be other things that, uh, required in the permit that we're not doing in one year that we need to do the following year. So what we've been doing over the past couple of years is reallocating the funds, uh, to meet the various, uh, criteria that's required in that permit each given year. So you'll see some of these line items from last year are higher than la- are higher than last year, and some are lower from last year. And that's where a function of what's required in the permit. And there are also some new items that, uh, these are new tasks that require this upcoming year. Uh, the first item here is testing and sampling. This is what we use to, uh, to take water quality samples. Uh, we started that program this year. Uh, we've just started it in the fall, and we're gonna do a heavy lift this springtime. We're gonna plan on doing more testing and sampling next year, but, uh, we're not gonna have to do as much testing as we did this year. That's why there's a small decrease in that line item. The next item is for data plans. We have a couple tablets that we use, uh, to track our stormwater activities. Uh, this is a, a data plan for, uh, I think it's through Verizon. Uh, it's just our monthly, uh, our use plan. Uh, that, that plane is gonna, we expect that to go up a little bit next year. This third item here is for dues. This is for our, uh, are, are the Connecticut River Stormwater Committee, which we are a member of. This is a committee that's comprised of about forty municipalities in, uh, the area. This is a, a great committee that we've, uh, benefited from. We've been able to do a lot of things through the committee, uh, collectively as opposed to individually. We're able to spread that cost out amongst all the thirty or forty communities and, uh, save, save on that end. So our, our, this really is just to pay our dues into that program. Thirty-five hundred dollars, that's, uh, our expected amount for our next fiscal year. Office supplies, we're look, we're looking to decrease that number. Last year, we, or this, this current fiscal year, uh, we spent a lot of those supplies on, uh, items needed for the testing and sampling. We're gonna be able to reuse those for next year. So there's a decrease in that line item. And the next item here is for stormwater mapping hosting. Uh, this is an increase. Uh, we have our annual dues paid to Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to, to host and manage our stormwater mapping. Uh, those dues are going up next year, so this is a request to cover, cover that increase, expected increase. The next item here is a new item for training education. For our permit, required to perform, uh, annual trainings for not just DPW personnel, but, uh, pretty much anybody in town who's, uh, involved in stormwater management. We've had trainings in the past through, uh, we've invited planning board, conservation commission, building departments to these trainings. Uh, this is an item that got cut last year. Uh, we were able to, um, we did not do this, but it's something that is, that is in the permit that we do need to perform. There are also, uh, seminars that are available, uh, frequently that, uh, myself or John Goddard from Water Corner take every, every once in a while, uh, and that would come out of this line item. These feasibility reports, this is a, a new, a request this year. This is a, a new task that's required. There are two reports that we have to develop, and these would be done by an outside consultant. There is a street design and parking lot guideline report, and there is a green infrastructure feasibility report. Those two reports are due this upcoming fiscal year for the permit. And this last item. Yeah, go ahead.
In regards to the feasibility reports, what is the purpose? What do, uh, we hope to accomplish?
So this is, uh, looking, so the, the, there's two reports. First is a street design and parking lot guidelines. So the, in, within the new permit, there is a push, a focus on, uh, green infrastructure. And, uh, so if you're not familiar with green infrastructure, um, this is intended to replace traditional drainage systems with newer systems that are more, uh, environmentally friendly. They are intended to discharge stormwater into the ground close to where it fell on the ground. So as opposed to having a traditional drainage system that, uh, puts all that water into a pipe and discharges it, you know, half mile down the road into a stream or a water body, the intent is to discharge that closer to, uh, you know, location where that water fell.
Okay, Randy, is this for new construction only, or is this to rehabilitate existing parking areas? Or both?
I, I think it's intended for new construction. However, if there is a, uh, a re, a reconstruction of an existing parking lot, then those, that would fall under this criteria. So in, in the permit, in the new permit, there is a, there is a, a new definition for redevelopment. So the, the original permit was really focusing on new development only.
Right.
So now, the, there's a definition of redevelopment. So if you are repaving a parking lot, there are new conditions that will have to be met. And, and so this report, these reports kind of tied together, uh, but they're looking, they're asking the town to do these feasibilities to see how, how, you know, I guess how feasible it is, you know, for these guidelines and, and what, what, what opportunities can the town produce and, and implement into, uh, town bylaws or the local regulations to, to enforce these new guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Is, is this a recurring, uh, cost?
The feasibility reports, no, this is, uh, this would be a one-time only cost. There's, uh, there's no other feasibility reports that I can think of that are due in year five. So this, this only one, this would be one time. And the last item I have here is public outreach. As I noted earlier, we do a lot of public outreach through Pioneer Valley Planning, but, uh, there is some local outreach that is required, uh, through mailings, uh, flyers or whatnot that we do in-house. Uh, so that would be paid through, through this engineering, through this public outreach budget line item. Um, I did get a question from, uh, Mr. Horacek, uh, about the, uh, this MS four permit, and I guess I'll read a question to you, and I'll give you my, uh, my response to that. Um, I can only guess who this came from, Mr. Mish. Uh, but, uh, the question was, please describe the benefits achieved thus far to the taxpayers of Southwick in light of our substantial investment in the compliance with an unfunded EPA, DEP stormwater management program. So that's a, a difficult question to quantify. Um, certainly, there's no, I, I can't give you a dollar value benefit at this time. The way this program is really set up, it's, it's the first five years of this permit is, is requires a town to take a hard look at your water system. Look at your bylaws, look at your policies, look at your operations, and identify where there are defects or gaps in, in, in your, in your system. So we are doing that by looking at our bylaws and policies. We're, we're taking, uh, inspections and, and sampling outfall locations. Uh, we've also looked at, uh, uh, inspected all of our municipal properties, uh, and we've set up, uh, standard operating plants uh, with, there was nothing present, and we're certainly doing a, a good education outreach program. So, you know, right now, we're only in year four of this program. We're not gonna see any savings, like dollar savings, I would say, you know, for several years. I mean, there's a program is intended to make the town be proactive as opposed to being reactive. And, and by being proactive, you know, we're gonna see those, those savings by, by heading off, eliminating any of these, uh, issues uh, where you may have, uh, illicit contaminants, uh, leaching out, running into our local water bodies, which would require much more extensive repair or cleanup costs after the fact. So I, I hope that answers your question. Any more question? Any more questions on this engineering budget?
Yeah, I had a question on the feasibility report you were discussing, that the the EPA has changed the, the aspect of the pipe. In other words, they don't want you to, to take the drainage from a parking lot and send it down the road. We want to keep it closer to the point of origin.
Yes, yeah, so that's, that's, and it's not a requirement. It's, it's, they're asking the towns to prioritize that. So as these projects come before the town through the planning board or conservation commission or other departments, uh, there's going to be an emphasis on implementing green infrastructure.
So, uh, what is there present, you know, or what are they, they forecasting? They expect us to do, so we've, we've got a new parking lot, got a pipe. What's that pipe supposed to do? Cause it's not carrying it down the road, so to speak. It's, it's kind of keeping it there. So what's, what's?
So, so there are lots of types of green infrastructure that have, that are, that are out there, and, and none of them are, there's no one-size-fits-all. So it's really psych-dependent. So some things in parking lots that can be done, there is a porous pavement option, so where the, the water would actually drain through the asphalt into the ground and leach through the ground that way.
Does that offer in, in, with our climate, to, to actually try to utilize porous pavement?
Yeah, there, there is cer- it certainly is, is in use in, in New England. Not, not, not in Southwick. I'm not a, pretty familiar with any of Southwick, but it is a technology that, that is available in New England. Uh, another option is, uh, a rain garden. So you have, uh, all your water directing towards a, uh, a, a depression in the ground, and in that depression, you have all types of vegetation, whether it be, uh, you know, trees or shrubbery or plantings. And, uh, that water will either be absorbed through that plant, or it'll drain down into the ground. So the intent is to, um, you know, make it so the water is, is like I said, staying where it fell on the ground. That's where kind of where Mother Nature wanted it to fall. That's where it should go back in the ground. That, that's the intent of green infrastructure. So there, there, there are certainly some costs that may be associated with it. There may, there may be higher costs to developers or, or contractors. Um, but there also may be, so, some may be more expensive, some may be less expensive. And there also may be more expensive options for long-term maintenance, and there may be less expensive options. So I, I, I can't tell you that's gonna be more expensive for others, one over one than others, but, you know, there, it's gonna be a change. That, that, that's where, that's where DEP and EPA are heading towards. Uh, you've seen this program implemented in most other states in the country. Uh, we're there, we're, it's just, you know, we gotta, it's something we gotta do.
Randy, I, I know you didn't write any of this stuff and, and, and any of the, it, it's so, so, and, and I know, and I'm empathetic with the fact that you have to administer it, but I'm having a really tough time wrapping my head around probably in the forties or fifties or whatever, you know, the rain just fell and it stayed there. So now we've, we've tried to take the water away from it, and now we're supposed to measure all these outfalls and make sure, make sure of this. And now the green community idea is, well, we should go back to where we were, you know, sixty, seventy years ago, and just leave the water there. And, but, but, you know, now we're talking about an eighteen thousand dollar feasibility report. We're talking about measuring outfalls and, and, and everything else. You know, to me, it's like, why? Why is this program even, even in existence if the green communities are telling us to leave here? It just seems like a huge contradiction to me.
If you look up rotaries in the, in, in, in that too, right? Like traffic circles are suddenly coming back into vogue again, right? They, they were great, then they were horrible, and we took them all out, and now they're putting them back again. I equate it almost the same way.
It just, it boggles my mind. I'm having trouble understanding the logic here.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Randy, I think I understand a long-term goal that, uh, this program is trying to achieve, and, uh, I agree that it's very important. Do you anticipate at any point that the town itself will have to restructure drainage on existing roads? In other words, in, to comply with this, uh, you know, the stormwater idea? No, I'm not talking about new construction. I'm talking about, say, like, Mort Vining Road, where right now, I don't think there's any drainage at all, per se. But say you've got, uh, stormwater catch basins, and they ultimately just direct the water to a stream. Do you anticipate the town itself will be involved in reconstruction projects for drainage on its own roads?
Yeah, I think we, I think we will, and not, not just the roads, but also municipal properties. I'll lump that into the discussion. So in year five, so right now, we're in year three. This budget request is for year four of the pro, of the permit. Year five, there is a requirement for the town to identify retrofit projects. That's what they're titling it. So we need to identify five projects in town that, uh, where we can produ- produce improvements through green infrastructure or other, other means.
Yeah, okay.
So the way this permit's written, it's a five-year permit, and the way it's written is the first five years is really, you're taking a hard look at your system and finding the defects. DEP has said that once the new permit, you know, the, the next permit, you know, say year six and beyond, that's really where we're gonna be required to make physical changes to our system. So that's where you're, that's your, your, your question comes in, Art, is yes, at, at some point, we are gonna get a director from Mass DEP where, okay, you've identified these defects, now you need to go fix them. That's how this permit's being structured.
Okay, thank you.
And Randy, just to further that, I think, do you think that this permit and compliance with the permit's gonna drive future construction costs? For example, when normally using Mort Vining Road as an example, that was on our list of roads that needs to be attended to, would, what would be the effect or the escalation of cost to a project to comply with the permit when you go to put in, say, drainage now? Um, and what is the, the effect of the cost, effect on the cost of such a project?
So drainage could, could potentially be, if you're looking at a tire road, you know, so I'll, I'll use Tannery as, as a good example. Okay, so we're gonna reconstruct Tannery Road next year. I think our budget is about eight hundred thou-, uh, it's, I think, six hundred thousand dollars is our budget. And, and we are spending about half of that on drainage improvements. The other half is going towards the road paving itself. So I think when you're looking at drainage, it certainly is, it could very well be a very sizable part of that project. Now, there may be things where we can do on, say, Mort Vining Road that we can't do on Tannery Road, uh, where it may be less costly. You know, right now, there's very low drainage on Tannery Road. I don't think we're going to, uh, I, I, certainly, I, I would see us adding some drainage. But if, you know, there's a system that's already there and in place and working, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna recreate the wheel. We're not gonna fix something that's not broken. So on Tannery Road, you know, there may be an opportunity to, to divert water, you know, off the road. So on Tannery Road, you know, there may be an opportunity to to divert water, you know, off the road and not have to deal with it, you know, through a pipe network like we may have to on Tannery Road. So it's really, it's a really, it's a case by case scenario where, you know, it's really give you a good answer on that question.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on the engineering or the stormwater permit? I I will, I will say one more thing, we've hired John Goddard as a stormwater coordinator about a year and a half ago. And he's done a fantastic job for us. He came into the job with a lot of knowledge and background in drainage and stormwater itself. And there's a lot of things that we were able to do through him as opposed to hiring out third party consultants. So we we certainly have saved quite a bit of dollars having him work with us over the past couple of years. All right, I'm going to move on to solid waste. I'll try to go quickly here, vehicle repair. So we're looking to increase that line item from eight thousand to fifteen thousand dollars. We do have a truck and other equipment that we've had to put a lot of money into over the past couple of years. Those costs have gone up. We also have an increase in uniforms that you talked about before. From twenty hundred dollars to thirty thou- three thousand four hundred dollars, that's to accommodate our new contract with Sinta, a renewal contract through Sintas and a purchase sweatshirts for the contract. Our refuse fees line items have gone up this past year, especially through COVID. We have seen a huge increase in the amount of trash and paper being brought to the facility. We did ask for an increase this line item a couple of months ago when select board of income were kind enough to sign off on that. So I think right now, our budget is at three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We're going to keep that at for the next fiscal year, I'm hoping that'll be enough. I'm hoping that COVID will die down and people will be getting back to their normal habits. Not cleaning out basements and attics and everything else at their garages like they have been in the past year. That's where we've seen a lot of increase. But next item is for trailer costs, we have a trailer at the facility, we use these line items here for sanding and can service, bottled water, safety equipment and can repairs. We've just asked for a little increase on that, we usually would go over on that line item, so we're looking to bring that more in line to where we have see our costs. Transfer station box, this is a container, we buy new container every year. These are what we store all of the trash recyclables in until we get to a point where we bring it, haul it to a third party facility. We like to replace one box every year through this line item. These next two items, environmental monitoring, a landfill closure, these are new for this year. So last year. Mass DEP conducted a site visit at the facility. They had a couple of issues they had concerns with regarding the landfill that was on the on the property. That's a brush landfill that was closed in, I think, nineteen eighty nine. At that time, there was the landfill was never, it was closed in practice, but it was never closed on paper. So Mass DEP, they made note of that, they, as a result, they are asking us to do several things to the landfill that they're saying would have been required in nineteen eighty nine, when that landfill would have been closed out, that we didn't ever had to do over the past three years, so now time is catching up and these are things that we have to start moving, start to do moving forward. The first item is environmental monitoring. They are asking us to put three groundwater monitoring wells on the property and sample those for a slew of contaminants. We have to establish those locate the locations of those wells and install them under this first line item for twenty thousand dollars. The second item for the landfill closure for the ten thousand dollars, that is to put a hard cap on the landfill. So the way it's set up now is they don't like the cover over the landfill, they're they they feel that there may be potential for the landfill cover to be be damaged by vehicles or other equipment, so they're asking for a hard cap. Either through pavement or through millings, likely will do millings on top of that landfill. And then we also, as part of that, there's some as built plans we have to develop. So these these two line items for about thirty thousand dollars for the two, these two costs. We do have some time, so if we were to do all this work that's required through me through by Mass DEP this year. This would be the title total cost. We do have two years to do this work, so if if it comes to it and we need to break up some of these dollars. There's an opportunity to do so with these two line items. Any questions on solid waste?
Yeah, do you currently have the millings for the for the closure?
We have a substantial amount of millings we've generated over the past couple of years. If we need more millings, we'll probably do that through a upcoming project where we would do a mill and overlay project on a road. We would mill out the existing millings and use those for this facility and then repave the road with a new pavement. So we'll generate all millings, either what either what we have or through through a project. Any more questions on solid waste? All right. I will go to sewer and then I'll I'll go, I'll jump back to water, I don't know if Ed's on the call, but I'll go through sewer real quickly here. So first item for the sewer is uniforms, again, this is just an increase in that that line item. Second item is for vehicle repair, again, we have an older vehicle that we're looking to replace. We've seen some substantial costs to that vehicle over the past couple of years. So this this next increase is is in line with those expected repairs. The next item is a carryover from the last couple of years, grinder pump maintenance. We own and operate about a hundred and eighty grinder pumps in in individual houses. This is a used to replace and repair those grinder pumps as they fail. Flow monitoring and infiltration, this is a program we started two years ago, we want to continue it. It helps us identify locations where groundwater and runoff is seeping into our sewer system. And we are having to treat that, pay to treat that at the Westwood Treatment Plant. If we can cut that off before it gets there, we see a lot of savings. We did some manhole repairs a couple of years ago and we, I think we paid six thousand dollars for that manhole and free repair work. And that paid for itself in about three months. So there was, we want to keep on with that program, we did buy a meter last year. So we are using that to send that around town at various manholes and to locate locations of infiltration and blow. And then we have an item here for skate upgrades, again, this is a carryover, we have a skater system. We're always looking to make improvements, repair and improvements to that system, and that's what this line item is for. And then we also have a request for a new pickup truck on the sewer department. As I mentioned earlier, we have seen a lot of repairs to that vehicle. It is a two thousand ten F one fifty, that's primarily used by our sewer foreman. And that base, that truck is basically his office, everything he has is in that truck, all of his paperwork, all of his equipment. And we've had issues over the past couple of years, so we're looking to get a larger vehicle, which will help him be able to bring all of it, all everything he needs under the job site whenever he needs to.
Hey, excuse me, Randy, if if we're able to advance the new item for the one ton pickup truck to replace the existing vehicle, couldn't we just put that vehicle repair line item back to the smaller amount since we don't have to invest in any more repairs to it and just get rid of it? Because if it's bad enough to get rid of it, then get rid of it.
Yep, that'd be absolutely, yep, I I put those in there just duplicates, but yes, that that would be, that's that's fair, yep.
All right, thank you.
Randy, quick question on the one ton truck.
Yep.
You sent us, I think, some quotes on that. And it lists the truck as being blacked, is the truck actually going to be black or something a little more safety? Not just a brighter color. I don't see public safety vehicles being black.
Oh, yeah, so our current truck is blue. We can, I didn't, I didn't note that before, that may be just a standard, you know, what they put in the quote, I don't know if we specified a color on it.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a big deal, but I just, I have a really hard time with safety vehicles out at night in the dark and weird places and they're blacked.
No, that's a good question, fair point, yep, we'll keep that in mind.
Okay, not a big deal.
Any more questions on sewer? All right, I'll talk about water now, is Ed Johnson on?
Yes, he is.
All right, perfect, so Ed, feel free to chime in if you need to, Ed is the commit and chairman of the water commissioners. So the first light item here is city of Springfield, this is a line item we use to pay for water, we purchased through Springfield Water and Sewer. Last year, we, our our water use increased pretty significantly, I think you may be familiar with that. Certainly, we're going to minimize this as much as we can, but just to cover ourselves, and we're looking to increase that line item. In case that water use does stay high as it was last year.
Randy, question?
Yeah.
I think I brought this up last year and the question revolves around the fact that we're still using Springfield water when we develop two wells in town and two tanks. And originally, I I thought the concept was that we would be more or less independent. My my first question is, I guess, why we're not independent? And second of all, earlier this morning, we're talking with the planning board about a master plan and we're talking about development. And of course, if we don't have a good water supply, I guess that would pretty much curtail a lot of development. So the, to me, the water issue is is very important, and I'm not saying that I support development or not. All I'm saying is that we're pretty limited if we cannot even supply our own current customer base with our own water supply because of a permit issue. Okay, that's now also my understanding that we could pump more water and store more water of our own, but it's restricted by the current permit. And further, the folks over in Springfield apparently just don't have time to look at our permit because they're busy out in the eastern part of the state. This whole thing seems really problematic to me. And before you answer, I'd also like to suggest that our select board contact our representative and senator and have them talk to the DEP about why they can't review our permit, because they're too busy. Now, if I'm incorrect in any of those assumptions, I apologize, and that's why I'm asking you to clarify some things here. But this whole thing is quite a cluster in my mind. And it's partly, it's not, none of it's your fault, again, I'm not focusing on you, you're dealing with what they give you. This is a bureaucratic cluster, a snafu, that ultimately could seriously impact development in this town and in the taxes and every other thing, so I have serious concern about the fact that we can't even utilize our own water because of a permit. Okay, go ahead.
So so, yeah, you are, you are correct, we are, we we have a water withdrawal permit through Mass DEP. That permit expired in twenty sixteen. In late twenty fifteen, the town submitted an application to renew our permit. And that permit application has sat since then. We are not the only community, every community in the state, I believe, also have, they're on, they're on a schedule. And Mass DEP has been slow to get to everybody's permit. So they are right now focusing on permits in eastern Mass, you are correct about that. I was on a phone call about a week ago with the person who runs the water management program through Mass DEP. They did say that the Westwood River Basin, which is what we are part of, that they will start reviewing those permits by the end of this year.
Well, that's good news.
So I, that is good news, but I will tell you that I've had conversations, I I reach out to Mass DEP probably once a year. I have been, and I ask them that same question, you know, when are, when are we on the schedule? And I always get the answer, well, maybe next year, you know, hopefully next year. So, yes, that is good news, but I've heard that, you know, three or four times now, so I'm not holding my breath.
All right, well, maybe we, our selectmen can light a fire under some folks.
So you you are correct, you know, we do have restrictions in our in our water system, our our permit allows us to draw only so many gallons out of our own wells. Last year, our water use spiked twenty seven percent over prior years, and it was a historic year. We've never had water demands that high. And we ca- we 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 capped our permit, we we basically ran that well as long as we could. We just submitted our statistical report to Mass DEP showing then how much water we used at all of our water sources. And I think we were at ninety nine point five or ninety nine point six percent of the amount of water we could use, we used last year. The remaining balance, we had to draw through Springfield Water and Sewer. So, yeah, we certainly are aware there is a restriction in our water system right now. We are hoping to play to to address that. Talking about future development, I think that's a very good point, Art, there needs to be a plan out there showing what this town is going to look like in the next five, ten, twenty years, because we don't know. The way things have happened over the over the past few years, it's kind of been a free for all and and there's an expectation that, oh, we're going to develop over here and there has to be, you know, the infrastructure should be ready in place and ready for, and you know, we're at that point where we we max out our water system, you know, we really can't, we can't. We don't have the, we don't have more water to sell. It's a hard thing to say, but that's the reality, we don't have more water to sell. You probably are aware, there's a potential development in town here, that development would be the biggest water user in town by a factor of three, okay? So we are trying to do what we can to accommodate that potential project. But keep in mind, there are limitations in how much water we can withdraw, also limitations how much water we can store. And also how much we can pump into our water system, so certainly, there's a bigger picture out there, I think we all need to be on the same page of moving forward, because water certainly is is a vital resource. It is a a necessary utility and certainly needed for any any type of future development in town. So we're not, we're not trying to limit development by any means, but we can only, we can only produce so much water right now, so.
Thank you.
Randy, you had said that water usage last year increased by twenty seven percent. How much revenue did we bring in by the fines that were imposed for people who were blatantly ignoring the water ban?
We did not send out any fines for water users.
Why?
So it's hard to, first of all, people are using water in the middle of the night. It's hard to catch them in the act, we don't have people that are working between midnight and six AM.
The metering system can tell.
The metering system can tell, but it's after the fact. And so we did not send out any fines, we certainly sent out notices to people warning them. And 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 we did follow up that way, but we did not send out any fines.
Okay, because I'm going to comment, as somebody who followed the water ban, who's going to take thousands of dollars to get my lawn to look like it was prior to, and there's people in our neighborhood who blatantly ignored it and then complained about the letters that you sent out, but they have a beautiful lawn and it's not going to cost them a dime to fix it. So I'm putting in my complaint right now that if you are going to put a water ban into effect, you need to follow it up. Because nobody is ever going to take you seriously. Because next year, I will say that if you put a water ban into effect, I don't know if I'm going to follow it now. And if you send me a fine, boy, you're going to hear from me.
Well, we, so this past winter, we have done a a a large outreach to people in town that were not following the ban. So as I said, it's it's difficult to track it in real person, okay? So the way our meter reading system is set up is it it tracks hourly readings. But there's no way for it to flag to the town or an alert to show up to the to us that this person is using outdoor water use. I wish that 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 feature was there, we we've talked to our vendor about that, that same question. They're telling us the feature's not there, so the only way to really track it, if we're not, if we're not patrolling the streets between midnight and six AM. The only way to track it is after the fact, and we have to look at each individual service, their usage, you know, in the day or the days or weeks after the fact. So what we have done this year is we've already sent notices out to the top seventy five water users in town, residential water users. We we looked at all their usage, hourly usage last year, and most of them did not comply with the water ban. So we we sent a a direct letter to them and we said, basically, you know, we put them on notice. We we said, we read, we we looked at your use last year, you were not a compliant, basically, here's your warning, okay? Next year, and we will be more diligent about this next year. And so that's what we have done to those residential users. I think we will be sending out water bills in the middle to late April. We'll probably have some very similar language in that water bill that goes to every water customer. I'm going to note the issues that we had with the water system last year, we were that that usage spiked drastically. And and let them know that, you know, there's, you know, we can't afford to to not follow these restrictions. So I I agree with you, Karen, it it's something that it we we put a lot of thought into, it it's not, it's a lot easier said than done, I guess that's what I'll say.
Okay, so when I fix my lawn this year and I use water next year, so that I won't have to do it a second time, I'm just going to get a warning letter, I'm not going to be. I'm not going to be slapped with fines because I plan on fixing my lawn.
I don't, I don't want to find anybody. That's the, you know, in my, in my mind, that's the last resort, you know, if, if you're. If you're blatant about not following the restrictions and, and you, you don't, you know, if I talk to you or you get, you know, several notices. At that point, that then we can find you, you know, that, that's my philosophy. I, I, I'm not, I don't want to be in the business of, of sending out fines and that, that's. That shouldn't be necessary. My, my hope is that we can, we can get that uh taken care of prior to that, it gets to that point.
This was also a record drought too, so got to keep that in mind. This isn't ever happened from what I understand. It's the worst drought I've ever been um that I've ever seen.
Yeah, that, that was definitely part of it. There was a, a drought last year.
Big part of it.
And then also due, due to COVID, I mean, Southwick's a bedroom community, so people were home more frequently. You know, they're not going out, so they're spending more time outside in their lawns and their gardens and trying to make them look nice. So I, I think that was part of it as well, but certainly, yeah, I, I, I agree that uh. We're going to do, uh, we're going to do a little more effort on uh, on uh enforcing the water ban this year.
I guarantee we're going to have more rain this uh, this summer.
Thanks, Ted.
Thank you, Shaman Mish. And then uh just one quick comment to Art's comment was, we have reached out to our legislative delegation. We've also reached out through a different agency as part of an economic development activity. That would be severely adversely affected by the, the water ban. Um, and the connection moratorium, so to try to spur uh that bureaucratic agency to. Uh, get off their proverbial tush to, to review that permit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wonder if D E P gives people that. Um, you know, do something uh, uh, in, not in accordance with their regulation, five years or six years to comply. Because to, to, for me, to, to, to think that they're taking five to six years to redo our permit is obscene.
Correct. I mean, there's a little bit of hypocrisy. I mean, you just listened to Randy's presentation about the capping of the. That they, they suddenly discovered that something was missed back in the eighties that we, now they gave us effectively two years to spend. That money to fix up, right? But at the same time, when you ask them to review, we submitted documentation in a timely fashion to review our. Withdrawal permit and it's languished for half a decade. And that's a paper review, right? They don't have to come out and do construction to do that. I get it.
I, I, I will say that this is a, a very politically charged issue uh in the state. There are a lot of environmental groups. That are bending the year at official, of uh Mass D E P officials and, and as permits. As, as the D E P is reviewing these permits. Uh, the environmental folks are, are looking to impose uh more strict conditions. And what's happening is uh the towns are trying to push back on those restrictions. And uh their politicians are getting involved. So it's a, it's, it's, it's been a dogfight in Mass D E P for several years and I, I think they really took a pause on this program. Um, it just because they wanted to kind of get everyone. In somewhat of agreement in terms of how they should move forward with the language in these permits. So that's part of the reason why there's been a delay in this.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we send every legislator uh a couple sets of earplugs then.
All right, anything else? So I think I was talking about uh hydrant replacements. This is a carryover from last, last year. We have old hydrants in the system. Every year we want to replace those. With newer hydrants, that's what these dollars are for. Same thing with our skating improvements. We have a skater system. Every year we're looking to make improvements towards. And security as well. On the past couple of years, we've added cameras, we've added uh security fencing. Um, other features, um guardrail improvements, so taking it out of those line items there. And then the last big item here is a capital project called transmission main improvements. When we built the college, the pump station on College Highway and replaced the water main. I'm sorry, the pump station on Jerry Drive and replaced the water main on College Highway. That project had intended to go all the way to Westfield, into Westfield. Uh, with our transmission main to Springfield Water and Sewer. Uh, once we opened bids, we had to eliminate this part of the work. And we all focused only on the pump station and the water main project in town. So what we're looking to do is re, reestablish that project. There is an old transmission main that runs from. Basically the town line all the way to about a mile or so into Westfield. This is to upgrade that, that, that pipeline. And uh so what the issue we're having and part of the problem we had last year was. We were not able to draw as much water out of the Jerry Drive Pump Station as we wanted to. And that was partly because of the uh, the, the, the transmission main. Was uh deteriorated and, and a condition where we could not get that water through that pipeline. So through this project, we were able to finish that, that bigger project. And, and pump the amount of water that we need to out of that Jerry Drive Pump Station. If we can do this, I think this will go a long way towards uh bringing more water into our source, into our water system. To your point, uh, there aren't, you know, it may not be town water, but if we can bring more water in. Uh, through Springfield Water and Sewer and service these potential, potential new developments. You know, that's the way it's going to have to be. So until we get to the point where we can, we can um upgrade our own system.
Randy, what is the um, what's the current uh pipe diameter and what is the new one you're going to put in?
So the existing pipe diameter is ten inch diameter. So, and what's happened over time is that pipeline has uh tubriculated, so it's actually gotten smaller in pipe size. So over time, there's a, a chemical reaction between the water and the walls of that uh pipe. And it, it is a buildup of gunk, I guess, the best way you can describe it. And over time, that pipe has no longer become ineffective, twelve, ten inch pipe, but it's decreased in size to. You know, maybe six, eight inch size or maybe even smaller. So we're not able to get the full capacity out of that pipeline. So we actually, we're going to look at two options when we, when we bid this out. We're going to, one is to reline that pipeline, so keep that ten inch diameter. Intact or an alternate is going to be to uh do a, called a pipe jacking. So we're going to, we're going to sleeve a larger pipe into that, inside of that, that ten inch pipeline, say probably a twelve inch pipeline. And uh that's another technique that would be done, uh, the trenches technology technique. You could dig, dig access pits and then uh run this pipeline, you know, in through this, the old pipeline. And not have to dig up the road or dig across driveways or lawns. So we're, we're going to, I think, approach it that way. I think we're going to get better pricing that way as well because we're going to keep. There's really only one, one vendor that can do the pipeline project or the lining project and there's a couple that could do the. The pipe bursting project, but we're going to keep everybody honest. Uh, I think we'll get some better pricing by doing that option through the bid process.
Thank you. What was that term again that you used for the uh? The uh.
Pipe bursting.
Pipe, pipe bursting.
Pipe bursting?
Yep.
Isn't that just like cholesterol buildups?
Probably very similar. So I apologize if I went over time here. Any, any questions before I? Log off?
No, thank you, sir.
Yeah, appreciate it. If you have any questions, yeah, feel free to reach out anytime. I'd be happy to talk to you about this in more detail.
Thanks a lot.
Well, now we, I managed to get us half hour behind, so we're supposed to be up, up against a break. Can we, should we take a five and then come back or should we just proceed?
Okay, I gotta have a break.
Okay, so we'll come back at eleven ten? Any objections?
I, I got five.
Doug, can I ask you a question? This is Mike Mas. Do you put up the slides or do we have to put up slides for you?
Uh, you should put up your slides, sir.
Okay.
You have slides you need to put up or do we have your budget presentation? We have your budget.
Yeah, if, if there's, there's an Excel spreadsheet you can throw on there, that'd be great and um, because I can't, I can't share right now anyway, so.
We all have the document, so we should be okay.
Okay. Or you can throw it up on a screen so we, we know what we're looking at, you know?
Okay, we'll be back at eleven ten. Art, or?
Fruit and yogurt parfait, my virtual fruit and yogurt parfait.
Excellent. Good for you. Does that mean I should go and get my uh yogurt up now instead? I want a, some wine.
That'd be better.
So this is recorded, is the uh visual recorded also or just the sound?
All of it.
And can anybody uh view it through the town's uh website or whatever?
It'll be, uh, we've been uploading them to YouTube. Um, within a couple of days of the recording and the recordings are filed with the town clerk as well per the open meeting law. So, we generally put them, um. I've asked the I T guy to make sure that they're putting the videos of these recordings up on the, the YouTube site for everybody to be able to see them. So, go ahead.
Do you access that through YouTube or through the, the town?
Uh, through YouTube. We don't have, we actually don't have the space to, to host them. Um, so YouTube is the best way to, to, for us to share those out. There's a, there's a town of Southwick. Uh, you can search for the town of Southwick and you can find. All of those meeting audio recordings and video recordings.
Well, this being my only video so far.
Well.
Hey Doug, this is Mas. Do you want to um give me uh the rights to share my screen or do you want to do it or how do you want to do it?
There you go, bud.
You're the man.
Okay.
Morning, Jeannie. Morning, Michael. Good morning.
So now we've got the park and rec. The floor is yours, Mike. And Gene.
Okay, hopefully everybody can see that spreadsheet up on the thing. It should say form number one, Park and Recreation Commission. Jeannie, you want to take part or you want me to do it? Go ahead.
No, I'll go ahead. I can go, Mike. Uh, good morning, everyone. Uh, Mike, just put up our, um, our budget request. If, as you review it, review it, you can see that we have um asked for no increases. In um our budget at this time, we are comfortable with what we have on this first page. Um, if anyone has any questions after reviewing it, I could explain.
I'd, I'd like to add that there are a few line items there. Um, that were, we actually expended lower than what was budgeted. Um, however, we would still like to keep obviously the, you know, the budgets the way they are. Um, some of the, some of the um. Salaries and such and a, a few of the other line items were, were not used, which the money goes back to the town again. Uh, obviously beach expenses, uh, uh, you know, things of that nature that weren't really utilized this past year. Because, you know, due to the um nasty word called COVID, um, you know, but other things that, that were, right? So on the one end, yeah, we didn't spend as much, but we didn't generate as much either. So that's, that's kind of that.
And with that being said, if I could elaborate on um our income as far as what we generated in two thousand nineteen. We generated fifty thousand three hundred and eighty dollars as an income for. we generated $50,380 as an income for the park. In 2020, we generated $15,000 revenue. So quite a significant cut for us. We did manage, however, I mean, for obvious reasons due to the pandemic, we, we weren't allowed to have as many activities at the park and have certain groups come in that we normally have. I can report to you that we've had an uptake in, or uptick rather, in people calling and starting to request reservations for the ball fields and rental of the pavilion. So we're hoping that we can generate our revenue and get back to normal business.
We hope so too.
On the other side of that, we lost two big huge events that we usually have. And I know you guys are well aware of this. The motocross parking last year it was 11,000, 2020, I'm sorry, 2019, it was 11,190 in 20, in 2019 rugged maniac parking was 5,300. Last year those line items was both zero. So the only thing we really made any money on was a hundred dollars for the pavilion rental for one rental. And the field rental, we got 14,900 and I believe, and Jeannie can correct me if I'm wrong, $11,000 of that was from the soccer, what do they call the place? I can't remember what they call, but they rent out the season.
Yeah, that is correct Maz. So if, if, if there are no questions in what we have requested on this first page, we can move along.
Jeannie, is there, is there, I know you guys mentioned that the, the revenue, the revolving revenues, how you had 50,000 in 19 and then 15 and 20.
Yes.
And at the same time, you also weren't having to put services and leagues and expenses on. What is the revolving balances now?
In each, each category Carl or?
Yeah, well, I think you've only got, you've only got two revolving accounts. I was just wondering what those, if it's fine if you don't have it, we can just get it from the town accountant for a future meeting.
Yeah, I don't have it. I can get it to you or make sure.
Oh, we can, we can get it. I just wasn't sure if you or Michael had it.
Yeah, no, I don't have it.
My apologies Carl.
Nope.
Okay. No, that's fine. Let's go on to your other stuff.
Right. So I'm going to click over here to this form number two. Come on. Here we go. Okay. So go ahead Jeannie.
Okay. So moving on to what we had, what we are requesting from this meeting is the operations of the park were our two categories. One is the Wally Park Lawn Care, which is a total of 17,681. That is a price that is broken down for the entire year for services. Each application costs around 3,500. There's one that's 4,495 for the summer application, but the rest average about 3,400 for the other three applications that we do. So the reason for our requests here today is because of the fact that our revenue wasn't as good in 2020. We're asking if, if that could be offset in the purpose of the reason why we, it's important to us is because it's desirable for our rentals for, for all the fields. And the soccer and our 90 foot diamond are probably our most used fields that we try to maintain in pristine condition so that we are able to rent more and more often to folks around the area. The other request was, would be the Wally Park EverSource Electric. We're requesting the $5,000 and the reason is, is to help cover the cost of the electric bill. And every year I know I say this, but part of the issue is, is every month when using the lights, there's an on-demand bill. So the minute you turn the light on, whether the lights on, whether you use them once in that month or you use them 20 times in that month, it is a thousand dollar on-demand charge. So the request for the five grand would help offset each month depending on how many folks we get to rent the park in that particular month.
Just an add-on to that, and I'd like to, well, I, you know, just to add on to that is basically if, if one or two people want to rent the park, you know, in the evenings for a month, you know, we have to say to them, well, it's going to cost you $1,150 to rent the field tonight, which is really cost prohibitive, whereas as if we had a little bit of a buffer, we might be able to pare that down a little bit. We try to split it up amongst the teams. You know, those fields or I'm sorry, those costs. So that's the electric part. My two cents on the lawn care is that's broken down into a spring, pre-emergent for crabgrass control, broadleaf weed control, balanced fertilizer, and that's $3,300 for the early summer. We do balanced fertilizer, broadleaf weed control, surface insect control for $3,300. And then in the summer, we do a balanced fertilizer, a broadleaf weed control, and then an organic merit and grub control for 45. In the fall, it's the balanced fertilizer, broadleaf weed control for 3,300. And then in the late fall, we do the balanced fertilizer and broadleaf weed control for 3,000. And this is all from Heritage Lawn. And those documents or bills can be given or quotes, as it were, can be forwarded to you guys if you'd like.
Yes, I'd like, I'd like to see those quotes, but I would like to see those things. I mentioned this before. I'd like to see them broken down to the actual, the actual product that they're using, not just, not just a broad, you know, broadleaf control or a crabgrass.
Terry, let me show you what I got. So hang on one second. Let me get to that one.
Is it the same as what we had last year?
I believe so, but it's going to be on your screen in one second here. Can you see it?
I see it Michael.
So it says lawn care. So basically on the, on your left hand side, you'll see it says spring. I think I might be able to bring that up a little bit. Hang on.
Yeah, make it bigger. There you go.
Spring and then you go down and that's, and that's, that's all four right there, but it's only the cost for spring on the first one. That's what we get and that's all they give us. So you know, we certainly go back to heritage and ask them to, okay, so this is the early summer. You see the price there. So there's all five applications of what they're doing, but the, but the prices are separate on each page, right? So I can go back to heritage and ask them for a, you know, a granularized, as it were, you know, summation of all this, if you'd like. That's not a problem. I don't think that'd be.
Okay, that's what I, I really need to see that. And because there's, there's, I mean, just for example, the, the merit that you're spreading there, there's a better product. If, if they're going for, for grubs, for example. And it might be a penny, it might be a little bit more, but it's a, it's a product that there's actually no caution. What do you call it? Caution thing on there like, you know, dangerous or whatever those goes. It's totally, it's the only one in the, in the country that doesn't have, doesn't have a, you know, some kind of warning label on it or whatever, because, because it's so safe. And it's very organic. It's a sellaprint, which is, it's, I don't even know whether it's organic or not, but it's a, I mean, merit's not organic.
No, I think, I think that's a little deceiving there, Carl, because it says organic, but they have to check that box in order for it to be organic on that list. So no, those are not the merit and the grub that we use, the grub X we use is not organic. So, and I believe if it was, those, those prices would be much higher. So.
Right. The other thing is that I, you know, I don't know. I haven't been able, obviously haven't been able to get up there and take a look. But I, I, I kind of thought that maybe there's more damage up there because of the, the extreme drought last year that you may actually have to have additional funds just to, just to maybe seed in, you know, more, you know, bear spots or, or things like that up there.
We had, we had the local guys, Gino, Gino Whitehead's company there. I forget the name of them. His, his son now runs it and he came out in the fall and they overseeded and put those little holes in there, you know, whatever they do there. So we paid to do that. And that was in lieu of hopefully fixing those, those bear spots, you know?
Okay.
That's what we did to combat that. So we're hoping this spring, we have a little better spring and that was funded through, through our own internal, you know, monies that we have, you know?
Okay, good.
Yep. So I'll put it back to the originals, put it back to the original screen we were looking at. Jeannie, you can go back to where you.
Just, just to comment on that also, we also had John Goddard meet with Heritage Lawn in, in requests by him to the water table at the park in reference to what we were applying and whether it was going to affect that. And he had recently confirmed that what we are applying, even though I know Terry, we're not giving you specific names, it at least, we do know that at this point in time, it is safe to put down in regards to the water table in the park. So I can confirm that. I do get what you're saying about better, a different product doing a better job kind of thing. So again, we will look into what you're saying.
Yeah. And I'm looking for, I'm looking for things like, you know, in that, in the fertilizer, you know, how much of that's water insoluble? You know, whether it's a slow release or if the, you know, agricultural product, you know, an ag thing, which is less expensive, but it's, you know, terrible to use on, on lawns and fields. So, you know, that, that's what I'm, I'm looking for actually, you know, relatively detailed, you know, and if you said it was Lebanon, you know, 3206, then I, I mean, I can look that up myself, but you know, they should have that information.
I know what you mean. And all the contents of the fertilizer. Yep.
Yeah, but yeah, broken.
Whatever. Okay. We can get that for you. Okay, Jeannie, go on with the crosswalk.
In regards to the, the crosswalk, excuse me, we, this area would be at the, the post street crossing of the rail trail. We have a request from David North of Electrical Contractors in regards to putting in the crosswalk in this area that has been quite a concern within the last couple of years through, from people in the town and just from incidents that have happened there. Did you receive the quote? Have you guys received our packet?
Yes, I can put it up on a screen if you'd like.
Yeah. Has this, are you considering asking the CPC for these funds? Well, yes and no. Yes, but when we put in this request to, to, for, to go in front of the board today, we, we did it and then we missed the deadline for CPC to get on to the next town meeting. So I would say that if we were not, if we were denied today at this, we would have to go, you know, go for the next round of applications through CPC. So yes, it's being considered to answer your question. Okay.
Can I ask a question about the operations again? Wally Park Lawn Care and EverSource, are there some identifiable savings in your current operational budget? Because of the COVID situation that you can, you could transfer out of your current budget towards those two line items? In other words, have you saved some money because of the, basically a shutdown? So Arthur, if I understand what you're saying, if they're running a surplus right now before 30th and they could undertake some of this work before then?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Fund it through money that's already in their operational budget.
Yeah, even if the FinCom had to give you permission to move stuff around within your gross number of operational line items.
And the other question is, are you looking to have these two operational line items made permanent? You know, Wally Park Lawn Care and EverSource. Is that what your thinking is?
I would think that, I would think that the Wally Park Lawn Care would be, would not be a permanent. I would think that the EverSource would be a permanent, just based on the fact that we already know what the demand is every month, every time you, the lights are initially turned on. So that would be like a set, that could be something that was set. Again, the reason why we're asking for this, I mean, the obvious elephant in the living room is just because we did not generate any revenue.
Right, right.
We're kind of going to catch 22. If we don't keep up these services, if we don't keep up the lawn care, then we're not going, not saying we're not going to be able to rent our park out. However, it, it being in pristine condition isn't, is what attracts quite a, quite a few people and anybody can tell you that. I've seen it on Facebook where people talk about the park being, you know, beautiful, clean, blah, blah, blah. I think that that's what generates or keeps a reputation going where we do, where we now already have people calling and asking to book these fields and the pavilion and stuff.
I'm not questioning the importance of, of the request. I would defer to Elder Mish, but I would imagine that the Wally Park Lawn Care is an annual event that you have to deal with.
We've been paying with that through our own funds, the $50,000 generated. That's how we usually pay for it.
So this looks more like to us, it's a one-time request. That's what.
Exactly.
Yes, that's, that's, I think, sitting here today, yes, I can say that that would be it unless we have another horrible year of not making any money. You know, I can't foresee that, but that's the reason why we're asking for it today.
And Art, Art, don't worry, we'll think of something else to ask you for next year. So don't worry about that. You know, we won't stop making up crap for you guys to pay for. Don't worry.
No, but I think it would be important again to look at your current operational budget, see if you can squeeze any dollars out of that to put towards these two items because they're operational items as well. And then if there are, then it would reduce the amount of money that we're looking at even for a one-shot, one-year infusion of cash into your budget.
So, so just if you're, if you're referring to this, you're looking at us running on a $42,000, $43,000 budget normally. Then you're going to ask us to try to squeeze this and pull $22,000 of operation from a $43,000 budget. I think that's a little.
I'm not, no, I'm asking you if you can't squeeze money out of it. I'm not saying.
I don't know, maybe we could.
Well, that's what I'm asking you to do. You need to look, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, like right now, I think I, to Arthur's point, right now you're, the balance sheet that was issued on February 25th. As all your salaries and operations started out at 108,000, a 41, you've got $10,700 that is encumbered and you get 56,000 right now. That's unencumbered, but again, that's all your salaries and operations. So if you went and looked at that balance sheet and said, okay, Mike, Jeannie, let's look at, look at your numbers. How much do you think you need to get to June 30th with maybe the beach opening in June and some of these other things? How much out of that 17,000 do you think you could, that you'd still have in your budget by June 30th that you wouldn't have expended so that you could reprogram for some of these costs? Okay, I think that's really what we're trying to get to. It's like, you might already have half, you might already be halfway there. That's all. We can do is we can find out how much money is in those balance, the revolving accounts, the two to three of them that you have and what the balance is. So we could try to find some of those answers out while you're looking at your line item stuff now. And then you could see, talk to Kara, figure out how much you think beyond the money you've already got encumbered to pay other bills, whether or not you can cover any of that or some of it.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay. And I'm, I'm looking at, again, back at that, the fertilizer thing. There's, I think there's a good possibility. I think there's poss, a good possibility to actually, uh, maybe even cut out an entire, uh, application. Something like, uh, the grubs, you don't have to go every year for that. Once you kill them off, you're, you're, uh, pretty well done with them for, you know, a number of years. Uh, and if you're using things, you know, that are slow-release fertilizers, uh, as opposed, you know, to something else, um, you know, you might be able to cut one whole cycle right out of there. So, um, and I think it's something, you know, again, I, I'll look at it. Um, I'm not a total expert on it, but you know, there might be other people that can look at that and say, no, you really don't need this or that or the other thing at this point in time. I mean, I, you know, are there grubs there? I, I don't even know. Don't even, you know, somebody's got, would have to kind of look at that, but you know, that, or surface insects. There probably are, but you know, it might only be, uh, every other year kind of thing. So.
So I think, Terry, what you're saying is that if we got a breakdown of every line item, that it would make it easier, right? So what, what can we cut? What can we keep? What can't we do without? What can we do without? Right? Kind of what you're asking?
Yeah. I'm looking at fertilizer end of it. Again, that's where my expertise kind of comes in, but, um.
We can get you that information.
We did cut an application last year based on money and based on the pandemic and not needing, uh, not really needing it. Because by that time, some of the fields were already dead because of lack of, um, water and, and, um, the way the, the irrigation systems were set up. So we rectified that. So we'll see what happens. But we did cut out an application to save some money. Um.
All right. So you want to do the crosswalk system there?
Yeah. So, um, okay. So with that being said, we put up the, the dollar amount for the crosswalk. With the form that you have in front of you from, uh, David Northups, that would, that's the, uh, the actual job that would be done. Uh, what's going to go into the system as far as it's going to be solar, solar monitored? There is like a two-way system in which folks can, the pedestrians can press a button across and, um, the, there's like, um, detectors that detect when there's pedestrians and when there's cars. So the, the purpose of the request is because, uh, it has been, it has become a safety concern. We've had some complaints. This is something that we've been, uh, working on. We did try to put it into a grant. The year before last, we were denied the grant. But we are still working on trying to get this implemented. We do have a system on the, uh, the, uh, other side of town on Route fifty-seven. It's a kind of a similar system that we would have installed here.
Oh, I put up the, the bill from, or the quote from Northrup. And, uh, like, like Genie said, it's solar powered. It would be Powder Mill Road at South Long Yard and the rail trail. Uh, and you can just read for yourself what's on there. It's, it's the, uh, you know, concrete foundation, solar-powered radio-controlled system, uh, X L light bars with pedestrian indicator, pedestrian push buttons with signs, passive pedestrian detectors, pedestrian cross signs, including down arrows and all mounting hardware. There's the all labor materials and prevailing wages. Um, that was, that's the price does not include, but most of those are not applicable, except for the police duty that they would need that day. And down on the bottom, you could see it was twenty-one thousand, seven hundred, or three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Can you tell me?
That's a three-way stop sign. I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I was going to say, that's a three-way stop sign there. It's totally different than, than, uh, uh, Route fifty-seven, which is a, you know, the vehicles are driving through it thirty-some miles an hour. You're supposed to be stopped there.
Yes, we, we realize that.
I, yeah, but I could, I could see better signage, like, you know, um, some bright colored something or others there, uh, saying, you know, watch for whatever. Maybe it's there. I, you know, I, I don't know, but, um, I don't know. I think it's a little overkill myself. My opinion.
Genie, Genie.
Yes.
Have, have you worked with the police department and DPW on this?
As far as what, Russ? Just seeing about them enforcing things a little bit more or?
No, uh, have you, this proposal, have, have you had any discussions with the, uh, safety officer and/or DPW about it, this installation?
Um, uh, no, we have not.
Okay. Because there's, there's different safety regulations, uh, that would be, have to be addressed. And also there's a, the possibility of redoing the, that particular stretch of street. Uh, Dick Grenell's could go into more details about that. Uh, so this might be a case where, I mean, we might be getting state money, salary, do all this, or, or if you went and installed this, we might have to rip it out to meet, meet the new requirements.
Okay.
I, you know, I, I would say that we need to do a lot more study on this, um, and, and get, get more people involved before we could really consider this.
Okay. That can be done.
Makes sense.
Absolutely.
Uh, two, two things from my end. What is a passive pedestrian detector?
It is, um, from my understanding, it is, it is a, it allows, it's a signal that detects that there's people there. And what it does is it triggers, uh, the light to, not a light per se, a stoplight, but a warning light that there's people coming to that intersection. And for the people who are in their vehicles to be aware of that, so that they can look on either side of them to see where the pedestrians are.
It's kind of like a train crossing a mile and a half before the train comes, the lights come on, start flashing, you know, same type of thing, you know?
I think that would be the best way to explain it.
Is this similar to what they have in Westfield on Shaker Road, Mike?
Yes. Yes, it is. Okay. Yep. Same type of situation. I mean, you, you know, that's, that's what, but you're right, Russ. I mean, if, if, if they're going to do improvements to that and they're going to rip up all this stuff, that, that would be a huge waste of money. So I get it. I, I, I get that. Yep.
At the same time, I think it is a really important thing to be looking at because, um, I drive down that way and that, the rail trail, there are a lot of people who on their bikes just zoom right through and assume they're not going to stop. It, it's an accident waiting to happen.
Absolutely. And there are a lot of people in their vehicles who even though it is the law, do not stop properly. And you have, you know, then you have the vehicle person thinking they're right, and you have the pedestrian thinking they're right. So there's, there, you know, there's both ways that it can help with safety of each individual person at that particular point.
I, I think that one thing is that is being overlooked at this time though, is, I mean, I can personally say I've had years taken off my life because of people on the rail trail not stopping as they are required to do, and they just zoom right across. And they, I don't know that they don't realize there are blind spots. If you're coming up South Long Yard and going towards Depot, you can't see the majority of the way. So we can put these items in, but if the people are not utilizing them, like they're not utilizing the stop signs now, I don't see what benefit this is going to add to us.
Put a couple of cameras in there.
Yeah. Cameras in and item tickets. There you go.
There you go. Yep. All right.
Keep where to get revenue.
Okay.
And that was it, right?
Any more questions?
Yep.
I, I have a question going back to the, uh, five thousand dollar request for electricity.
Yes.
Do you anticipate if that were placed in your budget on an annual basis, that you would be able to, in a normal year, collect more revenue because you'd be able to have more night events?
I absolutely agree. Yes.
Yes. I believe so too, because what happens is these teams want to do these night games or they want to do double headers in the afternoon, you know, or in the, you know, weekday. They start at four o'clock, five o'clock, whatever, and they can't do the second game. It's cost prohibitive. I think we can get more money, uh, at this point by renting those fields out in the evening for a, you know, and we're going to try to offset that, that thousand dollars, you know, surcharge. We always try to do it. But on the thirty-first, if somebody wants a game on the thirty-first and the first, we get charged a thousand for that month and, and a thousand for the first month. So it, it, you know, it is kind of crazy. Um, so we're not asking for the full twelve grand, uh, because we don't obviously use the fields for that. But we are looking for, you know, the five thousand, um, you know, just to kind of make it more, more appealing to, you know, people to use those fields at night.
Mike, do you have any feeling as to what revenue you might have lost? And, and how, and how does it break up? In other words, what does a field cost?
Yep.
You have them pay for electric and then they get the extra thousand dollar surcharge if they're the only.
Last year, last year, or I'm sorry, I keep saying last year, twenty nineteen, we were thirty-one thousand dollars in fields. Last year we were fourteen thousand dollars in fields. So, uh, and that's the only real breakdown I have, you know, at this point, um, to, you know.
You don't have your, your coordinator checking, um, you know, saying, hey, hey, I got a call today. They wanted to rent the, they wanted to do a night game or they wanted to do a double header. And they, they, we told them what the surcharge on the electric was and they said, no way.
I, I, I believe there are records like that. I mean, I'm sure Kara records like that. Yep. Because, yeah, that's a, that's a big point of contention for us and hence the reason why we're asking for this in the first place. So we can get you those records if you'd like. Um, um, I, I'm sure there's, there's things back to twenty nineteen. Now, twenty, twenty twenty, there's, you know, there's probably nothing because people weren't, you know, they, you know, they were being real quick. But twenty nineteen, I'm sure we can get your records. Sure.
We've had it where. Go ahead. Go ahead, someone.
I was just going to say, um, you can't penalize, you know, a, a, a group, um, or a team or something that just, that happens to be the only one in the month to do that too. You got to have just a straight across the board, you know, fee and, and hope that you get enough to, uh, you know, to, to, to cover it over the course of the month.
Terry, I agree. How, how does other people do it then? How do people do that do night games?
We usually, if someone asks and say they call in the beginning or they want it in the beginning of the month, we try to have other booked parties involved with that. And usually at our meetings, we discuss that this particular team wants a night game. And then we go through our calendar to see how many other teams are, are scheduling. And there's been times where we have, we have paid for the thousand dollars or what we do anyway. But where we've negotiated with a team where we've paid the offset and we'd still allowed them to play, um, the night game. And one of the reasons is because a lot of times soccer goes almost the whole entire, um, season. And we've negotiated with the soccer, uh, program. They pay it quite a bit of money. And we usually, they, they give us money towards the thousand dollar, uh, pup charge as well. So usually when we know we have soccer stuff scheduled, we try to take anybody who helps us. And I'm pretty sure, and I, I can't, don't quote me on the price, but we do charge a little extra to teams, um, and tell them why. Because of the surcharge, we tell them that. And then they pay an extra twenty-five or fifty dollars. I can't remember you guys what it actually is off the top of my head. But, so we, we negotiate those with teams and within our own, at our meetings. That's what we do.
Right. But what do other communities do? What's your competition?
Oh.
So, I mean, do they charge an extra charge or do they, are, are rates better, you know, worse or whatever?
Yeah, um.
And trying to figure out how to market this, um, if the town's going to pay for the, pay for the, you know, or jumpstart the program with a five thousand dollar investment, how can we market this so we increase your overall revenue, um, to, to make this pay for itself?
I think, well, one of the things, and I think it's happened, is we charge more for night games. I know we do do that.
Other towns, I believe, have a flat fee for that. So, so, you know, it might be, instead of a normal hundred bucks, it might be two fifty or, or one seventy-five, and that's it. And they just, they take their chances. So if they don't have five people, you know, at a hundred bucks more, you know, or, or, or ten people at a hundred bucks more, they lose, you know, they, they lose the thousand dollars. You know, or, or they supplement that, that thousand dollars. Um, but, but that's typically how it works. What we try to do is spread that around. And we will also allow, like the high school had a couple of events, senior night, this and that for, for baseball. We had them, uh, charging people five bucks to get in so that they could pay us for the demand charge. And that was probably two years ago or three years ago. So, so there are different ways of doing it. I like the flat fee method where you just charge, you know, instead of charging seventy-five or eighty bucks a game, you charge a hundred fifty, you know, for the night game. And you combine them with the day games, you know?
Okay.
But there is a chance you're going to lose money on that, right? Bob, because if you don't have enough people that want to do games that, 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 that week or that month, you know, you, you know, if you don't have ten people at a hundred bucks more, then you're out, you know, you lose. If you have twelve people, great, we made a couple of extra hundred bucks, you know?
Yeah.
I think that's all we had.
That is.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll let you move on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Anderson.
Good morning. How's everybody?
Late. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I didn't say good afternoon.
We just made it. We just, just made it. And I, uh, did I see the deputy chief? There he is.
There he is.
How are you, Rich?
Good morning, everyone.
Doug, can I share a screen or?
Absolutely. Hang on one second. There you go.
You got it over there?
You might want to make that a little larger if you can.
You had it. Where the plus sign is?
Oh, um, I don't see the plus. There's an arrow for down.
Yeah, that's weird, huh? Magnifying glass, maybe?
There it is.
It's really strange. Zoom to page one.
Yeah, it's getting better.
Yeah, you can move that over, that, that middle.
That border, move the right border over.
There you go.
Hey, there we go. We got it. You got it? Yes, sir.
Well, you can still get rid of that part on the right there.
All right.
Yeah, I don't have an X out of it. That's what, let's see.
With you.
All right. And every time I go on one of these, it's different buttons everywhere, it seems.
Yeah, you can, you can still.
Starting with the fire, um, one of the first things I know, we, well, there's been some conversations in previous meetings in regards to the fire salaries, the volunteer salaries. Uh, it's not shown here, but one of the, one of the challenges we have is, um, is the minimum wage. So that recently went up January fourth to, I think it's thirteen fifty now. Uh, when a, when a volunteer call force member comes on, they start at twelve bucks an hour for any call they go to or any training they're doing. So, um, luckily with COVID, we're in the process of, um, altering some of the fees because it has a rippling effect. As people get, go to the academy, get different certifications, it all kind of has a rippling, rippling fee. But with that said, uh, we have not been doing a lot of training with the, with the COVID. We've been limited to what we can do. So I think the thirteen fifty part we can absorb, uh, this year with what's left in the budget. I think we're at thirty-three percent. We pay twice a year. So we're in really good shape. However, um, I think for next year, we, you know, we might be looking at roughly five percent if that fifteen dollar an hour thing goes in. So.
Well, you, you, you're going to legally be required at fourteen twenty-five in January.
January, right.
So the, the budget we're planning now, six months into it, has to accommodate for that. And we also have to retitle it as call force stipends.
Okay. So at, long story short, I think another five percent or five thousand dollars will take care of that and, um, and be able to absorb those, those increases. As we go down, uh, really, pretty much it's a, a flat budget with the exception of the items in yellow and red that I've, I've put through. So I'll go through those. Radio maintenance obviously is a, is a issue, depending on what happens with the radio system. I think most of you have been involved in that. Radio maintenance, obviously, is a, is a issue, depending on what happens with the radio system. I think most of you have been involved in that. With our regional aspects of whether or not we get grants for that, we're looking at, you know, a million, a million and a half or so. And it depend on what happens with the regional, our whole, our goal is hopefully that in this regional transition that that it's paid for somewhere else. So until then, we could be six months or we could be three years from actually happening. We still have to maintain our radio. So that's why you see that the ten thousand dollars still in there. Uh, contracts and agreements, um, an increase of two thousand dollars. Uh, basically, some of that's fixed, fixed prices. We have a lot of different softwares and, and different, uh, items that we have annual contracts for. And that, we've seen that start to rise as well. The Verizon Wireless account probably is the biggest increase out of operational costs, going from forty eight hundred to eight thousand. And part of that is ties in with, uh, you'll see the capital increase as well. Is we're trying to put laptops and tablets in, uh, our, our first line pieces. And this is, this is part one piece of trying to work towards reducing our insurance ratings. So what those do is they have a, a response mode in the truck. So when a call comes in, it comes up on the screen where the address is. Helps us, helps us to record times, but allows us to actually look at where our fire hydrants are, what the building's made up of, where the shut offs are, the hydrants, the sprinklers, all those types of connections that we're, we're used to. Basically, it comes right up on our tablet in front of us. So that, that's where you're seeing the Verizon increase because we have to put, um, cradle points and, and wifi in all of, all of the, or three or four of the trucks. And you'll, you'll see that again in the hardware down in the capital. Minor equipment, a twenty eight hundred dollar increase that regards to, uh, replacing a gas meter that we have. We're in the past, when Columbia Gas with partners, we, they had a program of giving out a gas meters specific to, um, gas. And that is pretty much become obsolete or about to become obsolete. EverSource, we're not aware of the program that EverSource has something similar. We need to replace that on our own. Uh, the career clothing reflects an increase in regards to adding another person. Uh, it was pretty much contractual. Computer supported, uh, computer support again. That increase there is again reflecting, um, some of the stuff will actually, that, that computer does, it's, it's underneath in the. Just scroll down. So under the capital, we're looking to replace an electric fan. Going wireless, getting away from the, the gas and the plug-in type of things. We have one. This will replace the second one. Um, and then the truck wifi is the five thousand dollars. That is a, another, uh, that's for actually buying some of the hardware that goes into those, um, those units from the wifi, actual wifi parts and some tablets. And then, um, again, on hose and equipment, we are at the five thousand dollars again, just continually to replace some of the outdated gates. We're working on twenty years and hose. And again, there on the radio equipment, uh, as we mentioned, possibly up to one point five million on those. Any questions?
I do real quick. Um, so I, I want to go back up to the volunteer, uh, stipends.
Yeah.
So you, because you don't have it filled in here and what I'm looking at, um, what do you, uh, are you gonna say, uh, eighty five thousand dollars again, or do you want to go higher than that?
What's? I would say extra five. So I'd say go to nine thou, ninety thousand.
Okay, only up five grand. Okay.
And we.
The onboarding is, is where it really affects it. It's our newest members. Because they come in, you know, and typically within a year to a year and a half, they're, they're off to an academy and their rate changes a little bit. But that minimum wage is starting to catch up to what somebody train is. So that will have to kick up a little bit, but I, I believe we can absorb it in, uh, most of it at least.
And, and, and still keep, uh, what you, who you've got, correct?
Correct. Yeah, numbers stay the same. Just some of the rates would change.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yeah, I guess I'll go to, um, EMS budget then. You're with me one minute here. One of the things I, I'm trying to get open here is, um, I believe you got, got this information already, but I want to go over it.
Yes, we did get that. Rob has sent it to all of us in the last couple of days.
Okay. The, the first item on the EMS budget is going to be the EMS salaries. And it basically goes back to that three-year plan of, um, adding another medic on, bringing it total to eight. And what that does is it allows us to, um, make some more attractive shifts. One of the, one of the things we've found is it's, we've had a tough time trying to keep some of our medics that we've hired. They keep going to Westfield, other towns, um, for more attractive contract, if you will. And we're working on that as, as time goes on through a couple of different contracts we've had and, and would continue to work on. However, one of the big things that happens is it's become a very standard, uh, procedure that, um, fire departments either work a twenty-four hour shift or what they call tens and fourteen. So they work two daytimes, then two nighttimes, and then they're off for four days. Our, our current rotation is twenty-four, excuse me, four on, four off, but they start at six AM, start at, you know, end at six PM. So someone that, let's just say it's coming from Springfield or Long Meadow, has to get here for six AM. It makes for a long day by the time they get out and get home. So we're looking at trying to do the twenty fours, um, this additional person, we can't do it until we have a total of eight people, and this would allow that to happen. What I, what I wanted to look at is kind of more the revenue side since we've, just a quick refresher, since we've started this. Um, and as you can see, um, what we're allowed to bill, you know, from the time going of ALS has, has gone up about twenty percent. Three eighty-six, three hundred and eighty-six thousand to three hundred and fifty-eight thousand and nineteen. We're currently at two, four fifty-three, but we, we actually saw a decrease due to COVID. When you go to the total revenue, we actually received, we, that twenty percent still reflected from, uh, eighteen to nineteen, which is, which is basically that transition. So, um, we do see a twenty percent increase. And when you look at it, where it, it comes in regards to the intercepts from Westfield, we've seen a seventy percent decrease or like fifty-seven thousand dollars decreased from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty. So we, we went in July of nineteen was our rollout for, for going out ALS in-house. And as you can see, it has a drastic impact on what we've spending out of the, out of the, the, uh, so our billing's going up and our costs are going down. So when you take and look at the net collected minus the intercepts, it's, we, we've done a decent job. It's gone up about a hundred thousand, forty, forty percent or about a hundred thousand dollars net versus where we were in two thousand eighteen running the BLS. Granted, our costs have gone up dramatically with manpower, but I think this is a good indication of how it's helped offset us. It's helped us get the second ambulance out the door, um, as we're having more people and onboarding. Um, it's becoming, unfortunately, it's becoming less community-based, like the old days of, you know, many E and Ts from the town of Southwick. They just don't exist. Um, so it's, we're more reliant on part-timers from other towns and, and the mix. So adding this other person is a, is a, a key part. But the other part of the, um, what I wanted to look at, we don't necessarily, we always think ambulance, ambulance, ambulance. And this other person, and this allows us to do a twenty-four hour shift, so that there'd be two people here twenty-four, seven at that point. This is our fire loss for the last few years. Um, typically, we do about a half a million dollars in fire loss. Last year, we were one point five million, or just about one point five million dollars in fire loss. And that stemmed from about six fires. Of that, I'm gonna say three of those fires that were, were of significant, had a fifteen-minute response time, which is huge and dramatic. Um, what, what this extra person and having the ability of the twenty-four hour shift, this allows them to be out the door within two or three minutes and to get there and, and make a difference in these fires. And I think there's two or three of these fires, this number would have been drastically reduced if we had those people sitting in the station ready to go out the door versus coming from home, getting dressed, coming here, then driving to the fire. A couple of serious fires, we're, we're fifteen, twenty minutes. But when you take, you add the math of five, eight minutes to drive here from some of the people, and then five to eight minutes to the fire, plus the rollout time, that's a drastic impact on the fire. So why we never really see these numbers, that is having an impact on the community and insurance and, and, and all those things. So I just wanted to show that in regards to, it's more than just the adding of the, of the person. Back to the budget. So, uh, yeah, EMS. So again, we're looking to add one more person, um, that's on the spreadsheet, uh, further down in regards to the, it's about twenty-six dollars an hour of fifty-six thousand in, um, salary plus thirty percent benefits roughly, uh, same model as we, we had in the past. As we kick down on the EMS budget, we see the, uh, radio maintenance again. Trying to keep that up there. We're not, we're not really sure what's happening yet due to, due to the, um, the merger or whatever you want to, I guess you call it a merger with, with going with regional or if we don't go with regional. Contracts and agreements. Again, a little bit up from last year, two thousand thirty, five hundred dollars up from previous year. Again, some of our software costs related, I don't know what it is, but whatever it is with software costs, that, that all seem to be jumping dramatically. Uh, you know, you, you used to pay two thousand dollars a year for something. Now it's three thousand dollars. And we probably have three or four of those that we're using. The, um, ambulance billing, again, that goes up slightly because we're doing more ambulance, more ALS as, as we go down that road. Our calls continue to increase at, at the ALS level. So we're at, I think, three or four percent of our bills. So as our billing goes up, so does our cost to do those bills.
That's correct. Three point nine percent is the arrangement right now.
The, uh, medical supplies is, um, this is a tough, this has been a tough year to try to figure this out because we've had two things going on in the past. If you remember, we had ALS, uh, line items to, to get up and run. And then we quickly got up and running with the second ambulance as well. So we're, we're okay. And then we added having to get COVID supplies as well, all the PPE for that. But we're trying to, um, give it a best roll of the dice. And based on some of what we've done and what we're seeing in, in the drug costs and, and all those things that are all moving parts. Long story short, um, the proposed would increase by eight thousand dollars. Um, again, on capital, we are, it's at that point of the ambulance. Uh, let's see, this is the, for the medic. Yeah, the medic, um, pause in there. And the ambulance, we, we, we mentioned on the ambulance looking at re, re chassis, and so take the box off, put a new chassis under it. Um, when we looked at that, it was roughly two hundred and fifty-ish thousand dollars, two sixty. And then when we looked at a brand new ambulance, you're looking at three hundred and five thousand to three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Didn't really seem like that the re-chassis was worth it because when you were done, you had a ten-year-old box and ten-year-old hinges and, and all that kind of thing in the ambulance. And we, we want it to go another ten years. So that would make it twenty years old for some of the guts in, in the ambulance. So we're in favor of the rotation. This is, we typically have been on a ten-year, hundred thousand mile rotation. We have, um, also been utilizing the, the second ambulance used to be more of a backup, uh, when ours is down or something along those natures, but we've been seeing more and more uh, calls for two ambulances at a time. So now it's actually generating more revenue than, than it used to. The other, uh, part of that would be the, what we call the Lucas Auto CPR machine. This is the machine that automatically does the, uh, compressions. Those are reaching their end of life. We have two of them. We'd like to replace the first one this year. It's about fifteen thousand dollars including the trading. And that's pretty much. Any questions?
Yeah, Russ, I think you need to add in, um, for your ambulance, you also need to talk about the downtime. Uh, if you re-chassis it, it's gonna be off the road, not gonna be available for what, like three months or something?
Six to nine months, wasn't it?
Yeah. Three to six months, the ambulance would be out of service. So we either go without one, which is a possibility, or we, we have to lease one um, for, for the time that it's gone. And, and that really doesn't seem cost-effective either, on either case, on that, that point. You're losing revenue on both sides of that.
It would defeat the purpose to have to go lease one.
Gee, are you, um, uh, anticipating keeping that other ambulance if you buy a new ambulance?
No, no, the, the one, the existing second ambulance?
Right, the existing.
Yeah, no, we, we would trade it in. It's, they, they'll give you five to ten thousand. Um, the, the, basically the rule of thumb is if it goes over a hundred thousand miles, that, you know, plumbers and painters are gonna buy them. Um, they won't, they won't put them into service for a, uh, a medical use per se. Um, but that said, you know, it really, it's little money at that point. But we won't keep it, no.
Okay.
Any questions? Why I should go before lunch more often?
No, I think, yeah, you and Richard, with, with what you guys basically, because I, I'm with you every day and Doug and I have been involved with you in the, uh, the dispatch thing. You guys are going through a lot of issues right now on many different fronts. So, and I.
It's an understatement.
That, and I appreciate, uh, what you guys do.
Right. Rich, do you have anything I missed or, uh, want to chime in on anything?
Um, just with the, um, with the Lucas devices, obviously, you know, if, if it was ever a machine that's made a difference in EMS in the last fifteen years, that's certainly it. Um, and, and the costs are, they seem rather high for what it does, but understand there's a, it comes from Stryker, which is a very large company that does a lot of electronic equipment, a lot of research and development goes into those. Um, and when we say end of service life, basically what it means is that the manufacturer's no longer providing parts on, on a contracted basis for repair. So everything is out of pocket to repair them, whereas before they have a service agreements and they take care of everything that's covered under that service agreement. So the equivalency of your, your auto, um, warranty wearing out, then everything becomes your responsibility. It's still a good piece of equipment, um, but we have two that were very similar in purchase timeframe. So next year, we'll probably have to come back and request a second, the replacement for the second one as well, too. Um, but it's a difference maker. And, you know, we, we've done a lot in the last eighteen months with the, uh, with the budget we've had and the equipment that we've had. Um, but I just want to reinforce what the chief said about the price of doing business has gone up remarkably since COVID hit. Imagine that, people taking advantage of something like this, but those prices will never come down. And the availability of some of the equipment that we've used in the past will never be restored as well, too. Some of the manufacturers have just moved away from making an item that wasn't used, it wasn't high demand. So now we've had to change and, um, make other purchases for equipment we normally wouldn't use, but it's what's available right now. So it's a, it's a changing, changing world in EMS and certainly in the medical field as well. But thank you for your continued support. It's made the job a little easier. It's made it a lot, a lot easier, I should say.
Russ, I, uh, I think the, uh, police are very happy that you, you're, you've put in there the, uh, entire hit for that new radio, uh, system. So I'm, I'm sure they appreciate that.
Well, they're next week. So we're actually both asking, so we'll get three million, maybe.
Don't count on it.
Yeah, I'm not holding my breath. Okay, thank you all. Appreciate it. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That was it for appointments today, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. So I don't know, Bob, if, um, or Linda, if your committee's gonna continue to meet, uh, I know when the, the select board are gonna do. are going to do the motion and um, and leave the uh, the meeting.
Mrs. Diehart.
Yes, Mr. Penau.
Before you leave, I know it's getting near naptime for a couple of the elders here. Would it be appropriate to just give uh, the finance committee a quick overview of what's going to happen likely with the green communities project? I don't know if anybody's really kind of heard a.
Um, all I can see is right now with the um, we have the assistance of the Regional Planning Agency with a point person of Catherine Ratai and we, under the same model we used to have that agency help us with community development projects. So we have them working with us and she, uh, we actually have a conference call next week with the school system, the Mass Department of Energy Resources and some other parties to see uh, what the schools can do to make sure uh, how they can approve themselves from a green point of view to also uh, see where they are because they did do undertake, you know, their projects several years ago. So they, they've actually, their concern was that they might have already done a lot of things that meet the criteria of being a green energy uh, school district. So that's being uh, looked at. And then there's the issues that have to be looked at on our side of what we would have to do. And that involves speaking to um, Alan Schlesler for the um, the zoning bylaws that have come into play. And then there are the other issues that relate to the stretch code, which is a general bylaw. Oh, that's where we are right now. Um, and I'm not quite sure how that process will develop time-wise. We, we certainly would like to see what has to come out of it. Uh, that would go to a town meeting, make it to this May town meeting, but who knows? I mean, it, it may not end up happening this town meeting. It may end up being a future.
Might be even too tight for, if there's a zoning one, it has to have a planning board hearing prior to
Well.
prior to adoption, right?
And uh, to that, to that exact issue, some of what they might be looking for may relate to the solar bylaw, which is amendments that you have already referred back to the planning board.
But they're correct, except that that, the proposed amendment to that bylaw has to do with use in a zone and in the green, I'm not intimately familiar with it, but it, the green pieces has to be allowed by right. And, and there was no provision for that in the proposal that's in front of the planning board now.
Right, but, but our referral to them was generic. So there's nothing that prevents Alan from bringing that language from PVPC in compliance with D O E R uh, to become part of that zoning bylaw change.
So are we required to partake in this green community initiative? Or is this something we're looking into that we want to participate?
Oh yeah, there's no requirement. We're just one of, I think when Mr. Fox did the research uh, last fall and the board had asked him to be the lead person to uh, go forward with this, that he and I had been working on it since then. And um, we met with the commissioner of uh, the green energy program and his staff and Russ brought it before the board who did a, a vote to go forward with this project.
Okay. So what is the, what the incentive for us to partake in this? Are there grants, savings?
Um, yes, there are, there are entry, the entry, if you gain green energy designation approval, um, you're immediately awarded a grant. And in our case, Southwicks grant would be 140,000. Uh, which of course has come to light and become more important with issues on our public buildings such as things for furnaces. Uh, we, we have some furnaces and HVAC work that has to be undertaken in our buildings. And then we also have um, uh, issues with the downtown streetlights. And then aside from that, it does then qualify you for future years subsequent grants. So that's what research on that uh, uh, made that proposal to the board and we were given the green light.
And what are all the costs that are associated with the program, Carl?
Um, well, there's the issue with your, in the future, not being able to use hand-me-down pool cars. But aside from that, you have the issue with the stretch code. Uh, the stretch code, when we had that this program years ago, and uh, because I know Arthur was even involved in that on his committee. You, you know, there was a difference between what we were going to have to adopt locally and what the state was doing, but now the state requirements to the building code are almost there where it's, it's almost going to be indistinguishable. So that's on issues related, how people build their homes and how um, energy efficient and weather tight they are and how those have to be tested. And then there's the other issues that relate to um, having us uh, working with our electric company doing energy audits. We already do energy savings programs agreements with our utilities. And then there's the other issue of the uh, related uh, zoning bylaws that Doug was just referencing earlier.
So back to the pool cars, which was the first thing. Um, what's, what's, what's the issue? So you're saying that when we take a cruiser offline, we, we, we can't use that in another department?
Yeah, then they're not looking for those things going forward. There's specific criteria um, in the program. We did, uh, Arthur had made an inquiry. So we did provide that to a representative of your board.
So I should circle back to him on that?
Yes, sir. He is your vice chairman. And then whoever your liaison is, Blackboard could also circle back to us. Who is that, by the way?
Tim Pizaki.
That's me, Carl.
Oh, okay. Well, there you go.
I'll be doing a lot of circling this week.
Yeah, and, and, and it, it's not an issue. I mean, uh, because you also designated Arthur to be your representative on any project coming out of the tie-in bond report on building issues and capital issues along those lines. We have been regularly in touch with him and have him participating in those events.
And I'll get, I'll get some paperwork to the finance committee. I just need to get out a commercial copier.
You can, I don't think mine can. The staff will come into town. All the staff will assist you with that.
Yeah, mine was smoking today, just copying stuff for today's meeting.
So.
All right. Thank you for that explanation, Carl.
Thanks, Carl.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chairman.
So at this point, the selectmen should entertain a motion to adjourn the selectmen's portion of this meeting.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, roll call vote?
Doug Morgan, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
He's asleep. Joe's asleep.
Joe votes no, but it's two, it's two to one. So we're adjourned.
Right. So um, so now that we're going to log off, uh, um, obviously the FinCon will have to just keep a record of its um, if it takes any.
Aye.
Good boy.
I, while you continue in the meeting, are you just going to roll call out?
Carl, that's what I was going to say. I don't see a need for us to continue uh, finance committee meeting unless any members have a reason to.
We could approve.
That's fine, Linda. I can record that if you want. If you, if your board so chooses and.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Discussion, we, we could approve some minutes.
Discussion. It's a privileged motion.
We could approve some minutes. No, we didn't. Or not. I said we could.
No, go.
Okay.
Okay, hold on, hold on. Bob made the motion. Who made the second? You're all.
Terry.
Terry Mish made the second. Now we have a roll call vote to adjourn to. And so uh, just say your name and we'll go from there. But look, give me a chance to record it.
Art?
Yes, I'm all for a naptime.
Bob?
Okay.
Hell, yes.
Terry? Mish?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Carrie? Uh, Karen?
Yes.
And Linda, yes?
Okay, the roll call is, has been taken and the meeting is adjourned.
Have a great weekend, everybody. Thanks.
You too.
Thank you.